He's not partying, he's just one minute early.
That's a joke, that's a joke. We joke around here occasionally, it's okay.
Just while we're waiting, there? Let's hope, let's keep our...
Well, for the best this time.
Fingers crossed, absolutely.
What kind of happy Troy looks?
Yes, we are on the record, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone, and this is Tuesday, February 4th, 4:30 PM. The City of St. Clemente is... City Council is now in session. Do I have a motion for closed session?
Make a motion to move to closed session.
Check it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. We're going into closed session if our special counsel, Matt Silver, will join us.
And this is for the meeting of February 4th, 2025.
Good evening, everyone. Let's begin our meeting. Let's have a call to order. Folks, we're beginning our meeting. Let's have a call to order and let's, this evening, our invocation will be made by Assistant Pastor Steve Pascoe with Caverly Chapel San Clemente. Is the pastor present? I guess he's not here. Then let's, would anyone like to give an invocation this evening?
I'll go with you, Steve.
Okay, well, let's, let's have an invocation, then we'll say the pledge. Please pray with me. Father in heaven, in the name of our Lord, I want to ask you to be with us this evening, give us wisdom to do your will for the people of this city. Thank you for the service that the people have in their hearts to, to serve this city and to enjoy the wonderful community that you've given to us. We give you thanks for your blessings and, and we give you praise and glory and the honor that is yours, and we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen. Ms. Loeffler, would you please?
Okay, please remain standing, face the flag, hand over heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, let the record show all members are present. And this evening, we have a special presentation. The Friends of San Clemente Beaches, Parks and Recreation Foundation will, we have a presentation, so Mr. Loeffler, you're on that.
Absolutely. I, I want to do a disclosure here, we're about to give the city some money, and I am a member of the board of the Friends of San Clemente. I'm an unpaid volunteer on that board, receive no compensation whatsoever. And I introduce our vice president, Mr. Mike Greenwald, to do a little presentation here.
Mr. Mayor, Council, everybody. The Friends of San Clemente was founded to help the city of San Clemente meet its beaches, parks and recreation goals. We have a board, we have three of our board members here, or two, Terry Rousseau, Jim Kempton, and our executive assistant, Mary, who actually keeps us all in line. We also have John Dory, Rick, of course, Chris Butler, Jeff Hartman, Dan Feinberg, Brian Warford, Brian DiLaPointe, Andrew Morrow. Over the years, we have provided the city over a million dollars to help toward the goal of our beaches, parks and recreation. We are not well-known in this city, however, we're here for the mission, not for the mention. Working with your incredible staff Samantha Riley and Julia Pettit, we helped fund overall improvements, beach concerts, Springtacular, I'm sorry, Cinco de Mayo at Maxburg Park, Fun on the Run, and so many more. Many San Clemente residents get to enjoy their Carnival Colossus, and of course, the Snow Hill at the Glitz that we provide. We now get the great opportunity to donate $100,000 to the city of San Clemente for the building of our own city pump track at Steed Park.
Wow.
Yeah, let's see that check.
We had to get a new check, remember the other one? When you, when you got this kind of money, you gotta get big checks.
Come down here, we can get, Andy, you can get a photo here. Where's, where's our other, come on, Jim, Terry, where's Mary?
Mary, come on, Mary.
Come on, Mary.
Tell us what a pump track is.
Bike track, it's a 10,000 square foot bike track, like a BMX kind of thing. Get in tight here. Don't be shy.
This is your check.
Okay, that way. You got a bigger check so Victor couldn't cut it half.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, our next item is a presentation of commendations for life-saving rescue at T Street on December 25, 1924, Christmas Day. We had a lifesaver. And, you know, the government is in the business of keeping people safe and saving them, and oftentimes civilians get involved too. So Rod, why don't you share with us the presentation, the details, because it's kind of interesting and extensive, and I appreciate you summarizing that for us.
Thanks, Mayor. Noblock and council members, thank, thank you for the opportunity, if everyone could come up. All right. What's that? Yeah, on Christmas morning, Christmas morning, local surfers, bodyboarders, off-duty, or former lifeguards, current lifeguards, OCFA, ET-60, came together to rescue an individual that suffered a heart attack in the water at T Street. At approximately 10:40, some surfers, or actually, at 10:40, Randy Cummings right here is a friend of Ollie, who was the patient. He was bodyboarding, and he went over next to him, and he said, hey, how are you doing? And he goes, I'm tired, and he said, I'm tired, and Ollie said, Merry Christmas, and Randy said, Merry Christmas. And then, next thing you know, Ollie just rolls on his back. And Randy goes, you know, when I get tired, I roll on my back, you know, and just kind of rest. He goes, well, I looked over, and I just saw the whites in his eyes. So he held his head up and yelled at the surfers. And next thing you know, Cade Mattson, a local pro surfer, Luke Overen, and Daniel Richards, both are former lifeguards, Daniel for the state, and Luke used to work for us. Went, got there, Daniel went over there, took his fins off of Ollie to help his speed to bring him in. Randy helped Luke right away when Daniel was yelling, or Randy was yelling, he thought a set was coming. And so Luke's like, oh, there's no set, they need help, so he raised his board above his head to signal help. Meanwhile, there was Nathan Vandergast, I don't know if he's here, oh, right here, okay, Nathan Vandergast was visiting from Oceanside at his parents' house, he grew up at T Street, he's up on the patio, and he sees the commotion. And so he's like, I gotta alert the lifeguards, so he Googled our number. I was in headquarters, he called and said, Merry Christmas, and I said, Merry Christmas, and he goes, you might want to send some lifeguards down to rescue this going on. And so I sent our lifeguards Hayden Paul, Marine Safety Officer, and Ian Burden down to T Street. And retired OCFA Station 60, longtime carrier, Sean Garvey was on the bluff, and he happened to see what was going down, he ran down. And we had David Economos, right here, David was in the inside with Ellis Avery, 13-years-old, and with Sawyer Limbaugh. They were the inside. They started paddling out because they wanted to help, but they saw that there's already, there being help, so they thought they could serve better by paddling back to the beach. And so they paddled back to the beach, Ellis grabbed his cellphone, dialed 911, and David Economos went back out, and by that time Hayden got there, Hayden jumped in the water, and Ian was there within seconds after that. And they pulled in Ollie, they managed six-foot surf, storm surf, on Christmas Day. Brought him in, no pulse, no breathing, so they started CPR with Sean Garvey, Ian Burden, and Hayden Paul. And then Ian got the AD gone, and they shocked him multiple times, restored his heartbeat. In the meantime, Station 60, our public safety partner, without your crew, where, where, where's our, you guys come on up here? So we have Captain, Captain Greg Bradshaw, paramedic, McKenzie Snyder, firefighter, paramedic, John Rollins, firefighter, and Nate Williams, firefighter apparatus engineer. He was covering a shift, he's Station 30, right? And then we had the ET-60, Kyle and Bella, that assisted in this. So you can see what it took in order for this to go down. It was like angels were looking out for Ollie. So this is truly a Christmas, truly a Christmas miracle, all of you are true heroes. You all worked as a team to save a fellow waterman. Without everyone's effort, we wouldn't be here today with Ollie. You're all heroes, and you deserve the recognition. Thank you all, including Ollie, for attending tonight and making our town, San Clemente, what it is today, one town, one team. And before the mayor comes down and gives out the commendations, I'd like to let everyone know that Marine Safety has a Neighborhood Beach Watch program. It is, the Neighborhood Beach Watch program is a community partnership to help create safer beaches. Free training to the public by lifeguards on how to recognize ocean dangers, swimmers in distress and what to do about it. The goal is to make the beaches safer and help save lives. Whether you observe and report or physically assist someone, your, your part may save a life, like you all did on Christmas Day. For more information on MBW, you can go to the city website and type in MBW or Neighborhood Beach Watch to get more details on that free training. Also, I want to, one more plug for San Clemente Lifeguard and Junior Lifeguard Foundation, they will be hosting free CPR classes in the upcoming months. You can reach out to them on their social media platforms, and you will have a chance to make a difference and save someone's life as well. So I think the mayor wants to come down and give some commendations.
Thank you, Rod.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we're gonna join you in the, in the front to give the presentation, but Rod, thank you for that narrative and that description, I appreciate it. So go ahead and speak while we're coming down, right ahead.
So, thank you. Hello, everyone. So do you remember the council? So again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come in person, and thank you, everybody, for this amazing rescue. So for the people who don't know me, you say my name, I'm Ollie. I'm from an island in the Caribbean, French island, Martinique, and I was born in Martinique, and I could say now that I was also born in San Clemente on the 25th of December, okay? So above all, what I want to say is thank you to, to the Lord for, you know, giving me this second chance in my life, this second opportunity to be there with you. And I have no memory of what happened that day. I literally passed out, actually, I have, my memory stopped on the day before, and I woke up at the hospital on the 31st, asking to my wife what I'm doing here. And again, I don't remember anything, so people related the story to me. And, you know, the, the, the way the story was related to me, I realized that not only there was a huge collection of people to help, but it was the sequence. So everybody played a role at the right time, at the right moment, to pull me out of the water, et cetera, et cetera, and thanks God, and thanks to my angels, I'm here today. So I want to give the name again, because for me, they are my brothers and sisters, you know, from now on. So to Randy, my brother, you know, if one day you look to surf in San Clemente and you want to know if it's okay, check the camera, you're gonna see his white head popping out, and we know you could go, you could charge, he's always the, you know, the guy telling you.
That means it's good, don't come in.
So to, again, to Randy, to Luke, to Daniel, to David, to Cade, who is not here, thanks so much for pulling me out of the water. And I want to apologize, I've seen the video, that time I was, I was adding extra weight, I lost 40 pounds. And I know it was difficult for you, for you guys to pull me out, so I want to excuse myself for that. I lost 40 pounds now, okay, so now we're good. To, to Nathan, to Sawyer, to Ellis, 13-years-old, where's Ellis, right there, this is my brother, my little brother. For calling the right people to come to, to help. To Sean, Hayden, Yan, Greg, McKenzie, John, Nate, for CPR, shocking me four times, thank you very much. You guys owe me a wet suit, it was a brand-new one, and you cut it open, so it's okay, no problem. To Kyle, Bella, from Falk. Okay, guys, it's, it appears that your boss, who is in the room over there, is a friend of mine. I was secretly hoping that one day he would give me a ride in the Falk ambulance. He never did that, and you did it for me, so thank you for that. To Chief Rod, to Captain Sean Duran, I don't know if he's in the room today, he didn't come today, anyway. So guys, thank you so much. Again, to everybody, thank you, my family, so my wife is here, my, my son here, from the bottom of our heart, we thank you in those difficult times.
Well, Oliver, on Christmas Day, you got a great gift from people of love, and we appreciate that, and we want to honor the people that helped you, to give them a present, a token of our appreciation for what they did for you. God bless you.
For them too.
That's great. Well, let me, let me acknowledge the people we have here today. First of all, why don't you come up and, okay, Randy, Randy Cummings, we have a certificate of recognition for what you've done in this, this story. Nathan, Nathan Vandergast, there we are, Nathan, thank you very much for what you've done. Luke Overen. Daniel Richards. David, David Economos. Ellis Avery. Ellis, come right ahead there, buddy. Sean Garvey. Sean, thank you. And this is presented to the Fire Station 60 staff, Nate Williams, Kyle Palowski, Bella Mazukas, and I want the whole team to come over, this is for the entire, for the entire person. Come right ahead, bud.
You get down like you're at basketball.
Ollie, on behalf of the city, congratulations for a gift well received from the Lord as you acknowledged. And for all our volunteers, thank you, guys, for your love, your compassion, and your duty to your city.
It's what we do for each other out there.
My daughter, she's up in college, so she's.
Happy for you. We got a great team here.
Now you're part of a team that'll be walking off for people now.
Yes, that's my first.
I was actually at the fire, I mean, Marine Headquarters, because my wife was a food down, Christmas for lifeguards.
Yeah?
When this all was transpired.
Oh, so you were there watching the hook there?
Well, I was at the lifeguard, I didn't go down there to the actual scene, but it was quite the, very touching response.
Okay, well, let's take just a minute while the, looks like we're, some folks are leaving the chamber, so let's just take a moment before we reconvene. Item two is the council member reports, so let's begin with those. Who'd like to begin? Zen, you want to start and we'll move down this way? Go right ahead.
Well, since I'm brand new, so I'm doing a lot of catching up. I went to an Association of California Cities, Orange County Division Training Session. Then I went again to a League of Cities, League of California Cities Training Sessions. I went to Orange County Council of Governments and I was selected to sit on a policy committee at the SCAG, Southern California Association of Government, on Transportation Committee. Went to a meeting with OCTA Regional Transportation Committee just yesterday. There is an update on the Coastal Resiliency Project and that project will be presented again on February 10th on the OCTA Board Meeting. I've met with multiple department heads just to have a better understanding of our government operations. I've met with many, maybe about a dozen residents and the local stakeholders to talk about things that they bring up to me and want my input. So there are lots of things that I'm trying to, trying to get up to speed so that I can be part of the council smoothly. That's all I have to tell.
Thank you.
Okay, I tried to blow through this here. January 18th, we had our first volunteer brush clearing. We had 160 people there clearing brush and I'm sure a couple of my fellow council members want to talk about that more. The Cal City's Fire Insurance Committee, I'm part of that, and we discussed a couple of interesting things. Number one, in 2026, we get the new regulations from Cal Fire. They're proposing a five-foot clearance of all combustible materials around any house, not just new construction. We'll see how that comes out. And the most interesting thing was they're looking at trying to lobby for a tax deduction for fire insurance in the state of California, which will really help us out on the cost of that. Went to a Save Our Beaches meeting, they're gearing up for the citizen initiative to put the one, or one-half percent sales tax back on the ballot for the sand on the beach. Know it only failed by two points, got 64% basically and needed 67, so we'll look to see if that comes to fruition. Chamber of Community Affairs had a Water D-SAL Project presentation, the Doheny Water D-SAL Project that we possibly might be involved with, there's more to come on that. Had several new businesses open up in town and had ribbon cuttings and we have Edward Jones, we have the San Clemente Dental Group, which is next to Borden Brew up in the Walmart Shopping Center, Foundation Pilates on South El Camino Real, and my favorite, Crazy Cooters across the street from Daley's Grill, is quite a, quite a place, a good menu, great service. And we're, every, every week, we're having new businesses open up and it's really, really great to see that.
Great, thank you, Rick. Mark, you go ahead.
Yeah, I was also at the January 18th Emergency Fuel Reduction, it was a huge success. It was great to see so many people coming together on that from all spectrums of San Clemente. I think we had about 150 volunteers out there. And then I was also at the February 1st Fuel Reduction Volunteer Effort as well, off Salvador. Incredible stuff. There were a couple suggestions from, from community members that I heard. One was, Mr. All, maybe you'll take note of this, but that they have more time to, of a warning before that they're, they're going to do this, that the city's going to, so maybe a month notice or two-month notice. And then also that maybe someone could possibly sponsor one of these events, such as a church group or a high school team. So some great, some great ideas out there. Anyway, it was just incredible to see so much of the community coming together to support an idea of protecting each other. It was great.
All right, yeah. A few things relative to some of the boards. Past week, I was sworn in as a new board member, Board of Director of the Orange County Fire Authority. I've requested to be on two subcommittees, including the CIP and the legislative group. We'll see what happens with that. At the, at our first board meeting, I raised the issue of holding a public community forum for South County communities, and I think I mentioned this at our last meeting. We want to do something to educate the public on all the different aspects of, of what the Orange County is doing for readiness, for resources, for the reservoirs, for the hazardous vegetation, escape routes. And I think we're in line to have a forum for all the South County cities and will likely host it here in San Clemente. I will meet with our county fire chief this week to further discuss that. For the Songs Community Engagement Panel, as you might have heard, Chris Wright was confirmed as our new Energy Secretary with the promise to restore the country to energy dominance. The board of the CEP wrote a letter to him congratulating for his appointment and urging him to work collaboratively with us at the Community Engagement Panel for Songs on how we remove expeditiously the stored nuclear fuel that's being stored right here at San Onofre in our community. I also attended a conference at UCI, University of California Irvine, with our board leadership, where we, the biggest takeaway for me and the most significant was the demand for energy that will likely double or triple, or some even say quad-triple, over the next 20 years. And obviously, there's no way for us to do this as a state with renewable energies. So they're actually looking at other ways, including small nuclear facilities that can possibly meet that unmet need. So there's a lot of need for energy in this, in this state and we don't know how to meet that need, apparently. So people are looking at all avenues. Our focus at the committee is moving the stored nuclear fuel out of San Clemente area. So far as the deconstruction of the nuclear fuel is concerned, it's continuing on schedule without any significant incident over the past few months. By the, by the numbers, we have two buildings, full buildings that have been demolished, bringing the total to 42 buildings that have been demolished at, at the San Onofre site. 95 million pounds of waste have been shipped off-site. 107 million pounds of decommissioned materials have been sent to recycling out of state. That's the equivalent, 419 rail cars transported waste out of the site and out of San Clemente. In 2025, we're going to continue the demolition efforts and preparing for the containment domes to be demolished and dismantled as soon as 2026. On February 24th, we're going to meet with the leadership of several of the new Department of Energy Administration officials to bring us up to speed on what the new administration is going to do to help us in moving that stored nuclear fuel off-site. In March, we're meeting with Keystone, one of the consent-based citing grantees, who will be hosting a consortium here in San Clemente on consent-based citing. And it'll be one of the first public hearings on this issue in our town. We also have a public hearing scheduled for March 20th of this year to meet with the community on the status of all of our activities. We also have a meeting planned for, to attend the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant as leadership to see what they're doing and what their plans are. And we hope to do that later in March. Another committee I'm on, the Marine Liaison, on Wednesday, February 19th, will be joined by Heritage San Clemente in a presentation to the commanding officer of the 2-1 at a formal dinner to mark the occasion before their deployment and to honor the Marine tradition. So that should be a great event. Relative to the OCTA and sand restoration, we did, as was mentioned, we did attend a meeting. I had the opportunity to meet with our supervisor, discuss our concerns, and with our representative from San Juan Capistrano, who represents the city of San Clemente on this board, about our needs for more sand. At the committee meeting, they, they both very aggressively argued for more sand at OCTA as restoration. There is a report that, I think I have, and I'm going to have posted online, but I, clerk, do you, do you have that report? The significant takeaway from this, I think it's good news for the community, is they're still looking at the Mariposa Bridge and what can be do, and this is their concept. Then, but we're going to post this online and on our city site. Obviously, we've been trying for, for a year now to get that Mariposa Bridge up and running again, and they're, they're making great progress towards that happening sometime this year with, with their efforts. So I applaud the OCTA for those, those efforts and we will continue to monitor what they're doing to bring the remediation. This is the diagram, by the way, of how they're proposing to do it, at least the final, it's not final, they're still, obviously, as with every government agency, they're going to have public hearings and allow the community to have more input, but this is conceptually what they want to do and how they've designed it to open up that bridge as soon as possible. Finally, well, actually, I'm missing one thing. I'm a member of the, of the Investment Advisory Committee that decides how the money in San Clemente is invested. I should tell you that we, we're in good stead. One of the things that we did want to do and that we took up at our last meeting, just so for purpose of the public knowing, is we took up the 112 trust, trying to use that, that money that we have as our savings account and invest it in an account that will gain us more interest and more money and more return rather than putting it in the CalPERS account, which is constricted by what they can invest in, how they can invest it. They, in my view, handcuffed themselves into what they could do and so they get a lower return. We looked at the option of, of putting it in a PERS account and I think that's what I'd like to do when we make some motions, I'll, I'd like to invite them to come make a presentation to the committee on this and, and offer that recommendation that we do this. And so maybe we can invite our treasurer to the next meeting. And so at the appropriate time, I'll move the agenda as that. Finally, I had the honor of being invited by the Presidential Inaugural Committee to attend inauguration in Washington DC, to attend the parade and attend the inaugural ball. I was, it was a pretty cold weekend. I did have a chance to attend. I was also part of a group that hosted the Latino inaugural ball. We had about 1,400 people, three presidents from different countries. It was a grand success, we raised about a million dollars to put that on. So it was celebrating the transfer of power in an orderly fashion here in this country is always a good thing and that inauguration is what, what marks that occasion. It was a pleasure to be there. So that's my report.
Thank you, Victor. Good reports, one and all. I also attended many of these events, the Save Our Beaches meeting recently, the Chamber of Commerce D-SAL meeting, which is the desalization project will be getting our attention very soon and it's a very important community issue that we're going to have to think long and hard on, but that's a biggie that's coming up. Also, the brush clearing, Mark, I appreciate your comments, your suggestions. You know, that was put together in very short order and to have 160 volunteers come out and work as they did with smiles and shovels and rakes and it was nice to see the commitment to our community. And hopefully we'll do more of that in the future with a little more notice, that would be helpful, and sponsorship, that's a great, great idea. Victor, I also, the last Trump inaugural, I attended the Hispanic Ball and it was quite an enjoyable event, so I'm delighted you got to do it this time. That's wonderful. With that, the next meeting is Oral Communications Part One. Madam Clerk, do we have any comments?
Louise Herbert.
Pardon me?
Louise Herbert is our only speaker.
Okay. Do you have others as well? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Herbert.
Hi, I'm Louise Herbert and a resident of San Clemente for over 41, almost 42 years in town. This evening, I'd like to address the part of the agenda that is Oral Communications Two. Originally, this has never been part of the agenda of city council, but it was added in recent years for, I don't know why. in recent years for I don't know why. But in the most recent years, it has become a bully pulpit for one stand-up comedian, Tony Rubellino. Up until now, when Chris Duncan was on your council, that was his human pinata. Now it's become a few of you, others primarily, councilmember and Mayor Projam Enmeyer. There is no reason for the second Oral Communications. People can get here on time. Tony can get here on time. He waits at home, watches on TV, and saunters on down, and that has become very disruptive. It always ends your city council on a sour note. I'm asking that you bring this back to an agenda and that you vote unanimously to prove that you are not wagged by the tail and that you are not afraid of a bully for fear that you might be his next target. There is no need for it, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is a -- we need a motion for waiving a reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances. Do we have a motion?
Salute.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Do we have any items that need to be agendized immediately? Item 5, hearing none. Then let's go to item 6, the closed session report. Madam City Attorney, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do. The council met in closed session on item A. There was no reportable action. And they met in closed session on item B. There was also no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 8, Public Hearings. Item 8A.
Staff Communications.
I'm sorry. Pardon me?
Staff Communications. Item 7.
Item 7, Staff Communications. Pardon me.
And Mayor, I do have just one announcement this evening. The beginning of March marks the beginning of our 2025 Leadership San Clemente classes. We will be accepting applications beginning tomorrow. We accept just 18 people for this program, and we accept those residents on a first-come, first-received basis on those applications. So take a look at the city website tomorrow or call the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Great. That's a great program. If any of you haven't been through the Leadership Program, you get totally immersed in the city government, all of our departments, all the functions of government, how they operate. And if you want a deeper dive into how the city operates, it's a great, great program that the city clerk has been putting on for many years, and it's very, very beneficial. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Item -- That was Ms. Herbert's comment. She's down. Yeah. All right.
It's ended now.
Item number 8, Public Hearings. Item 8A, this is a bill for -- billing for the We Debatement Program. We have a staff report. Let's, first of all, let's open the public hearing. We are open for the public hearing. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Noblock. Members of the City Council, my name is Adam Matamian. I'm the Community Development Director. Tonight, closing out the 2024 We Debatement Program, the city has a We Debatement Program that occurs on an annual basis. It covers a few specific tasks. One is ensuring that private vacant lots are cleared and also clearing a number of city-owned properties. So the total cost for the 2024 We Debatement Program was $161,994. The majority of that cost was in clearing city-owned properties. The program did include sending notices to over 500 owners of vacant lots, informing them of the need to comply with the We Debatement Program. Of those notices that were sent out, 31 lots needed to be cleared by our We Debatement Contractor, and so the point of this item before you is to do a few things. One, it is to waive the city's notification costs for the compliant property owners, the other five, other of the 500, to approve the We Debatement Report that is attached, and to authorize the We Debatement Contract Administrator to bill the amounts indicated in that report. So I will close my presentation with that and entertain any questions.
Thank you. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
We have one public comment.
Can we hear that now?
Jennifer Massey.
Which is item A or 10A?
8A.
8A. We Debatement Program.
We debatement. We debatement?
We debatement.
Never mind.
Okay. I must have signed up for the wrong one because I --
Okay, no problem. We'll have you back when at the right time.
It was not a --
Okay. Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for staff?
No.
If not, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion or a discussion if there is any.
I'll move to it.
I'll second.
Motion made. Motion made and seconded. Shall we use our electronic? Well, just all in favor, let's just have a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much. Next item, next public hearing is item 8B. It's an appeal of a determination of a denial of an extension of a special event permit for the 2025 Christ Lutheran Church North Beach Services. Let's open the public hearing, and does staff have a report?
I do. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just a brief report, just to cover what we're here for this evening. Samantha Wiley, I'm the Beaches, Parks and Recreation Director, and under the Beaches, Parks and Recreation Department is the purview of special event permits. Part of this special event permit is a review period, and that includes understanding that the application received by any applicant meets the requirements of the Special Event Municipal Code. So this evening, we are reviewing a denial for a special event application for the Christ Lutheran Church to host its North Beach activity. As the staff report indicates, this has been a long, ongoing activity. I know it's very important to the community in many aspects. The staff's role as we go through applications is to determine if it meets the code or not. And at this point, based on changes to the municipal code a couple of years ago, because there are 52 occurrences of this event annually, it no longer meets the code requirements. Part of this process, though, is an applicant has the option to appeal that denial, and that's why we're here this evening. Council has the right and authority to make exceptions to the code and further look at the application as it stands. So this evening, we're looking for council's direction, and based on council's direction tonight, staff are happy to proceed one way or the other. There's a couple of things. The applicant has, does have the right to operate 30 days out of the year without any issue, and I will say they are a really great permit holder. We've had no issues with them. We do see them pay, and they comply, and if we need changes, they're always very responsive, and they have been for a number of years. So this has nothing to do with their past habits as a permit holder. So this evening, council, what we're looking for is either to uphold the denial and move forward, and staff can then proceed with the applicant and however they want, based on the code, or we're looking to, for council to grant the appeal and then provide further direction to what that exception looks like. And that could be a number of days or whatever that appears in council's opinion. I will ask, from the staff perspective, we are looking, if you do go down the granting an exception, staff would like to know specifically how many days per year we're allowing it. And then also, the other ask is, are you looking to have the applicant come back on an annual basis? This permit is issued annually, and we do require them to apply annually as well. So those are the two factors. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a question. What do we require of everybody that comes and applies for a permit? Is this 32 weeks? Over the 30 weeks, is this what applies for everybody, or is this unique to this organization?
This is, the 30 days is not unique to this organization. It's within the code. This particular application is unique in that it's our only ongoing application on a weekly basis or a permit on a weekly basis. Our other permits that you see happen frequently are typically only monthly. I'll give the example of the Downtown Business Association's monthly art fair, but that only happens 12 times a year, so it still complies within the municipal code.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, if we grant an exception for this, but the next person that comes in and applies, the 30 days is still in force, right?
That's correct, and we would issue the same letter of denial based on these findings within the municipal code, and that applicant could potentially or hypothetically come back and appeal as well, and we would return to council.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Jim?
Yes, I have a quick question. A few years ago, we changed the code. What is the change and what's the reason?
There, well, the code was pretty outdated at that point in time, and I will say there's even some, there's even in our current code, it references faxing and things like that. So I think there's always a consideration to modify our codes. But one of the biggest issues we had with the former code was it was mostly outdated, and it wasn't meeting the needs of the community. As council and many of the community members have seen, we have an abundant amount of special event permits that are issued. We issue about 75 on an annual basis. Prior to this code, we were only issuing about 45 or 50. So this code helped clean up our process and streamline how we issue permits and the minimum requirements and what requires a permit and what doesn't. Probably one of the biggest differences is the former code required anybody, any group over 20 to pull a permit. This code actually allows people, 50 people, to gather without a permit, as long as they're not using amplified sound. So that's probably the biggest nuance. It also further defined what a special event is and also specific spaces that would require permits and things like that.
Further questions?
Yeah. Do we have any other groups that are applying for essentially weekly permits?
Not at this time, not that I'm aware of.
Do we have other groups applying for 30-week?
No. I will say, in the past, we have had organizations come forward looking to host similar activities at different locations on the beach. Those have been denied, and no appeal has been brought forward after those denials.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, do we have public comments?
Yes, we have several speakers, so I'll call the first few up to the podium.
Please do.
Let's see. Mike Kay, followed by Donna Vedrine, followed by Don Levy, and then the next one is a decline to provide their name. So, Mike Kay.
Counsel? I'd like --
Sorry. It's --
You took a long time to get up here.
I jogged. I jogged up here.
My feeling on this is a strong one, and I would ask that you do not allow this to go forward. Our beaches are in bad shape, as we know. We're low on sand. It gets crowded down there, and my feeling, I've seen multiple groups. I live right by the water. I try to walk over there at least once a week, up and down the beach, and it's just too much, and I think a large group like that coming down violates the spirit and the ideas behind this, especially a group, a church group that wants to come down. It's a wonderful thing to celebrate one's religion, et cetera, et cetera. We all want to support that. Obviously, that's fundamental in the United States, but given that our beaches are kind of a, an area of a problem right now, that they aren't very large, they're crowded, there's already a lot of activities that are kind of marginalized when I'm down there, I would ask that we hold off on this, that this group find another location, perhaps a beach that better suits them, et cetera, et cetera, going forward. I know that's going to be unpopular, but when I read this yesterday, what was on the agenda, I just thought, somebody's got to stand up for those of us who use the beach and want some solitude down there, some peace and quiet. I took up surf fishing recently. I love it. I love standing out there. I love watching people kind of come and go and walk by, but the idea of a large group in a relatively small area like that just rubbed me wrong. So felt like I'm going to talk about it. So I would ask you, until the beaches are resolved and fixed, and we have a big, wide beach and plenty of room for everything, that we hold off and find another spot for these kinds of activities or minimize them to some other area, another park, I don't know, some other outdoor area. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Donna Vedrine, followed by Don Levy. The next is a decline to provide their name. Louise Nelson, followed by James and Kathleen Ferguson. Donna?
Dear Mayor and councilmembers, for over 30 years, Christ Lutheran Church has gathered at North Beach for Sunday morning worship, offering a place of peace, faith, and community. This cherished tradition is now at risk. Our permit for 2025 has been denied. We have filed an appeal, and tonight, February 4th, you, our elected representatives, will decide the future of our Beach Church. Beach Church is more than a service. It is a sanctuary where locals, visitors, and those facing hardship find connection and hope. We occupy minimal space, keep sound levels low, and ensure public access remains open. Our presence enriches the North Beach community, fostering inclusivity and spiritual connection. For over 20 years, I have found inspiration and peace, worshiping on the sand, feeling the ocean breeze, and watching dolphins in the wave. My grandson was baptized at Beach Church and later completed his Eagle Scout project at Christ Lutheran Church. My husband and I were married by Pastor Margaret in our church sanctuary. Our ministry extends beyond the beach. We operate a preschool, soon an infant care program, and support addiction recovery meetings, military families, and San Clemente Homeless Collaborative. Alongside other churches, we provide laundry love, allowing families in need to wash their clothes and bedding. Despite recent ordinance changes, Beach Church predates these rules by decades. Our request is simple: to continue gathering for worship as we always have. We urge you to stand with us in preserving this vital tradition. Please approve our request to continue Sunday morning services at North Beach from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. in 2025. Thank you for your time and consideration. Donna Vedrine, Council President, Christ Lutheran Church.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, could we remind the speakers to stage up close to the front here instead of walking through the hall?
Read the additional names that are coming, so they can be prepared to --
Don Levy, and then the next card, the speaker declined to provide their name, followed by Louise Nelson, followed by James and Kathleen Ferguson, followed by Anika Gambina.
Thank you.
Don Levy?
Go right ahead, sir.
Hello. I'd like to spend 45 seconds of my three minutes to first compliment the City Hall staff. Right here as of yesterday, I walked in off the street. Everybody I met here was friendly, hospitable, knowledgeable, and extremely helpful, from the receptionist, who connected me up to somebody, a woman who was in planning, who produced several pages of the municipal code for me, got it printed out, so I had hard copies of this, and then someone volunteered and gave me the name of Samantha Wiley, who's in charge of this arena of the city. It was most impressive. And then Samantha Wiley, I called early this morning, and later in the day, she had called me back, and the last thing she said was, hey, call again anytime you want, we're always here. So that was pretty impressive. The reason I have a personal interest is I have two people in my family who were baptized at Beach Church, and it's one of the many things in a community that happens kind of a little below the radar. Eight o'clock in the morning for an hour, they're out there, and anybody who wants to come and kind of worship in an unusual setting is welcome. I think it's well worth continuing, well worth supporting, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker?
The next speaker did not provide a name. It just says decline. Is that person here?
Do we have the person that filed that card? If not, let's go to the next one.
Okay. Louise Nelson?
I see someone rising. Are you the --
No, I'm not declined. Louise.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
Almost two years ago, I moved with my husband of 30 years to San Clemente. We had finally gotten the place we wished for so long, a home on the beach in this beautiful town, watching the sunset every night together. On a Sunday in only our sixth month here -- On a Sunday in only our sixth month here while preparing to go to brunch, we ended up in the ER. My husband never came home from the hospital. I found myself at Beach Church a year to the day that we had had a small remembrance gathering for him just up the way in Capo Beach. I had avoided church and God for a year, and I was really angry. Earlier in the week, I had driven by Christ Lutheran and noticed a truck that advertised church at the beach. My friend and I attended that week, and I knew that I'd found a place again in the church. I told Pastor Julie about my first year of grief, and she whispered to me during a really wonderful, warm hug, "I think of grief like beach glass. It never goes away, but over time, the edges soften. Go find your beach glass." And I did, a beautiful piece not far from where I stood. Her words made sense because we were at the beach. While I would have probably also embraced those words in another place there on the beach, my heart sang, and I felt more at peace than I had ever been in that past year. The beach and church are both places to feel deeply your pain, your joy, to come to grips with circumstances, and to renew. They're all intertwined, and Christ Lutheran knows this and has for over 30 years. The lives that have been touched in those years like mine are plentiful and meaningful on so many levels. It would be heartbreaking to see that connection end. I ask that you renew the permit for Beach Church to continue to heal and nurture. And as a final note, I just want to ask who it's hurting. It's not hurting anybody. A dozen or two dozen people show up every week. We don't get in anybody's way. You can still fish, you can still surf, you can still do everything. It's early in the morning, and we just commune with God and with each other and with nature. And how is that a bad thing? Thank you.
James and Kathleen Ferguson, followed by Anika Gambina, followed by Mikhail Judah, followed by Kathleen Ferguson, James Ferguson?
Do you want to read the following names aloud after this one so that they can be ready?
Sure. Anika Gambina, followed by Mikhail Judah, followed by Kathleen Ferguson, followed by Warren Vedreen.
Thank you.
Kathleen's staying back there. I'm James, I'm her husband. I moved to San Clemente in 1972 after getting a teaching job at San Clemente High School. And we, I taught there till we eventually, and lived in San Clemente, we still own property in San Clemente. And we moved on a boat in 1980 and stayed with that all the way until recently. But a couple of things I'd like to say that haven't been said is the beach is really special. We've, we're fortunate enough to sail our boat like all over the world, and there's been countless churches that we go in, in big cities and everything, Lutheran churches, and they are, know all about our church. And here you are talking to someone in London, and they said, "We've always wanted to go see that." And the word does get out there, and like I said, it is special. It is really special. How many churches get a chance to watch an engineer on a train go by and hold a Bible out the window? Just for one, okay? Or, I know we have a sound ordinance in San Clemente, but he gives you a light toot every time he goes by. It's really light because I know he doesn't want to blast away on those things. But for my wife and I, we've been going down there, I know, over 30 years, and it's really special. It got me back going to church again. And we serve our community well, and we do a good job of leaving that beach in better shape than it was when it showed up. But we really appreciate all the sand you guys did bring down because we had to get real creative there for a while. Instead of looking this way, you had to look this way and not fall over the edge. But I want to thank you for your support all these years, and I hope you would give us a chance to prove that a few more days at the beach isn't going to hurt anybody. So thank you very much.
Anika Orinika Gambina, followed by Mikhail Judah?
It's Anika Gambina, so good job. That's a tough one. I'm the granddaughter of a Lutheran pastor. I've been a resident of San Clemente for about eight years now. Christ Lutheran Church has been conducting beach services for, I think, almost three decades, predating this municipal code. As a former Marine Corps officer, I've lived in many different cities in this country, and my experience has been that most of the time, people tend to consider the spirit of the law over the letter of the law. And I think this is a case where the letter of the law is usurping the spirit of the law. In previous cities I've lived in where things like this have come up, there's always an opportunity, or normally an opportunity, when an established organization, especially one that's a nonprofit or a church who's in good standing with the community, if a new code comes up like this, they are given the opportunity to be grandfathered in or have an exception made for them because they have been around for so long. And I think this is a case where that it might be wise to consider that as an option. There's very little noise. I live in the pier bowl, and I can tell you there is far more noise created by far more nefarious things with far less response than I've seen to church. In reference to the gentleman who said he likes to serve for fish, look, I like it quiet too. I can see the parking lot to the pier bowl, I can see the beach, and in the summertime, I'm going to be honest, I know it brings revenue into the community, but it's real annoying at 2:00 a.m. when drunk people are stumbling up our street when I have to get up and go to work, there are kids screaming and yelling. You have to share the beach. It's part of what you sign up for when you live here. I think there are 168 hours in a week. I think giving up one of those is probably fairly reasonable to allow a quiet group of people to assemble, worship God, which obviously we value in this community since we've adopted "In God We Trust" onto our city logo. The beach, thank you. The beach does remain open to others. We're not excluding anybody. It doesn't require a great deal of resources, and I'm sorry, I forget your name, but as you noted, you know, they are in good standing with the community. So given that the impact is relatively small in a negative way, or if any, but the impact in a positive way on so many people has been so meaningful, as you can hear here, I would really urge you to consider the spirit of the law over the letter of the law, form over substance. Thank you so much.
I'll read the next several speakers, if you'd like to line up. Mikhail Judah, followed by Kathleen Ferguson, although I think someone said she was not speaking, followed by Warren Vedreen, followed by Richard Myers. Mikhail, Michael?
Hi, council members. I'm not a public speaker. I'm retired United States postal worker, four different injuries. I am part of a Joshua Generation Church, and I would like to just speak on behalf of Christ Lutheran. There's an aspect of my life that's part of my lineage and heritage in the God of Israel, and it ties into a legal precedent. And part of...
Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry. Part of that issue ties into being part of writing national fiscal policy, social security Part of it ties into legally trying to align with increase in state budget and city budgets. We do have some inner workings with the current administration, the president, so we've written referendums. And the point that I wanted to make about this issue is the fact that part of the legacy of the state of California and the city here, there's a destiny in our nation, and I think that there's an aspect of governing a nation and then governing a city. And so the implications are, this event is kind of tied to a kingly priesthood, and part of that is an inheritance in the God of Israel or the Messiah. So sometimes when we don't consider that aspect of it, it's not that Christ is archaic or somebody that doesn't really exist, but the point is he's in a glorified state now, 2,000-plus years. So he's looking at the poor and maybe the people in the public as his inheritance, and there's, there could be a little bit of non-consideration in that. But I believe that he wants to make the city a model example in our nation. I think if you consider that, you can align yourself for increase, you know, in federal funding. And I just think that the dynamic of that is very important in consideration, you know, of his heart and his inheritance and this public thing that occurs. Okay? Thank you for your time. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
You're fine. Thank you, sir.
Do you have a card for Kathleen Ferguson? Someone said she's not speaking. I'll give you a moment. Richard Myers, followed by Jackie Frank, followed by Father Patrick Carrar.
If your name was called, if you'd like to come up front, and there's some open seats, you can wait here and save a little time when your opportunity to speak comes. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Richard Myers. We've lived here for about 32 years, love the city, and stumbled upon Beach Church about two years ago. We'd been previously driving up to Lake Forest to go to a church, and we started looking around for something closer. It was amazing and a miracle that we found it, and we've been involved in it. I've driven the truck several times, we've been involved in setup, and I just want to let you all know that it's one hour out of the day on Sundays. We don't meet every Sunday because some days it's too cold or it's rainy, so there's probably not that many, more than 29 or 30 days that we do meet. But we'd really like to encourage you to consider a waiver for that, and as the previous speaker said, consider the spirit of the law rather than the letter. Thank you.
Jackie Frank, followed by Father Patrick Carrar, followed by Pastor Richard Ager.
I have to say, I've never spoken in front of a council before. My husband and I moved here from Kansas about 30 years ago, and we always wanted to live in San Clemente with kids in school, and we didn't. But we found a great place 10 years ago down in Ocean Hills, and we would go to the beach, we have an ocean view, a small one, but we just loved it. Well, during the pandemic, my husband went in for tests on his birthday, just to have tests, and I thought he'd come home that night, but he was gone in four days after that. So based on that, and I hadn't been in church, and I just, I couldn't go, I was just working, grieving, and I was, I'm the one with a friend. We went, we talked about it. Actually, we were drinking some wine when we decided, yes, we're going to go to church that day. Went down there and just loved it from the first moment. It's not just the church, it's the ocean, the birds, the water, but it's also the community. They know you by name, you know? They know you, they welcome you back, there's others that join us, and I've really been missing it and just love it, and it just, it brings me back to church, and it's a great way to start my week, and it gets my week off on the right foot. Thank you.
Father Patrick, followed by Father, or Pastor Richard, followed by Saul Martin?
Mayor, honorable counsel, glad to be with you tonight. I'm Father Patrick from St. Clements by the Sea Episcopal Church, the first church founded in San Clemente. It was there before anyone in this room was born. It'll be there doing ministry probably long after we're gone. And many of my parishioners are here with me tonight to support the petition of Christ Lutheran to continue their beach church ministry. I thought this was going to be a difficult task, but you've already heard from so many people about how vital this ministry is in our community. And you might be worried, well, if you allow this exception for religious purposes, that there'll be a whole line of other folk, you know, that there'll be people lined up from North Beach to State Park, worshiping God on the beach at 8:00 a.m. on Sunday. Well, if that happens, hallelujah, right? But I can tell you, fear not. That isn't going to happen because the rest of us are very happy in our buildings. But for Beach Church, this is existential. This is who they are and who they've been for the last 30 years. And as you've heard, they've been great at it. They've been great at doing this ministry. And I know that they've, they're doing life-saving ministry because I've worshipped with them down there at the beach. Has anyone here on the council gotten down there and worshipped with them? Ooh. Well, you ought to. You ought to. And then come by and see St. Clements, too. We need you to approve this petition because the council wouldn't ever want to limit people's ability to worship God anywhere in this jurisdiction. Of that I am sure. And so that I know as you search your hearts this night, that you will vote in the right way and that you will approve their petition. Thank you. God bless you.
And my name is Pastor Rich Ager. I am interim pastor at Christ Lutheran Church. I feel the congregation and Father Patrick really have done all the heavy lifting. You don't need to hear a lot from me. I will tell you that I first worshiped there in 2007, when I served on the bishop's staff for Southern California and for Hawaii of the ELCA, the Lutheran Church in this part. And I was just amazed. This is their sanctuary. This is their place. It's really cool. And as Father Patrick said, were other faith groups or other religious groups to choose to come and find other spots where they might be? I have no doubt, as it was said earlier, that the spirit of the law could be followed and that the letter of law might be understood as to its intent. And if it got to be such a huge problem, then it could be revisited, but I hardly see that as being the case. This is a small community, and I'll, I'll just say, in hearing these people speak tonight as their pastor, I am just so impressed. And sometimes it amazes me still, even after 40-some years as being an ordained pastor, how much the church and its place and its connections mean to people. And not just the small group that gathers, but I know on a number of occasions where I've filled in there and been at the Beach Church, there are those one or two visitors, as we've heard a couple of stories tonight, that led into perhaps further connection with the church. But one or two visitors for whom that placement is just the right thing to be. So I thank the people of this church. I thank you as a council. And just to say as a closing remark, what an honor to be here for the life-saving story and honoring of the community. And I just think San Clemente, I served as an interim at our Savior's Lutheran Church also for over a year, about a year ago, and what an amazing place to be. And I'm so thankful for this community and for all of you serving on the board. Have a good night.
The final two speakers are Saul Martin, followed by Sumter English.
Hi, good evening. My name's Saul Martin, and I've lived here in San Clemente for five and a half years. I grew up in Santa Cruz. I live here with my wife and three kids. We live near North Beach and spend a lot of time at North Beach surfing, walking the trail, jogging. And so I get a firsthand view up close of what goes on at North Beach, since I'm down there almost every day. I was surfing in the water there just before coming here. So I'm here to support the denial of the permit, and in general, I support churches doing services on the beach. I attend a church. Occasionally, we do services on the beach. But what I, what, the reason I would support the denial is because the negative consequences of the activities of Christ Lutheran Church at North Beach in particular. So what are those negative consequences? If all they were doing was having worship and teaching services, I don't think there would be any problem whatsoever. But the problem comes in with the feeding, the handouts, the laundry services, all these things that Donna Vedreen listed when she was just up here. There's a criminal element of people who sleep in the bushes, in the rocks at North Beach and in that neighborhood. They come out for the church services and the Bible studies and the handouts that happen at North Beach, and it attracts them and it keeps them in the area. If these handouts were happening somewhere else, say in the parking lot at Christ Lutheran Church, there would be a congregation and hangout of this criminal element in their neighborhood, but they're doing it at North Beach. And so what are these people who hang out there and sleep overnight there doing? Personally, at our house, we've had three instances of stuff stolen out of our yard. I've gone to work in the morning and found a guy passed out in our driveway with a heroin needle lying next to him. I've found heroin needles on the beach at North Beach. Three months ago, I was down at North Beach in the evening, and a guy was setting up his sleeping bag and tent for the night, and I told him that the rules don't allow for him to sleep on the beach at night. And I told him that the rules don't allow for him to sleep on the beach at night. And I said it very kindly and gently, but he assaulted me. He started throwing rocks at me. My wife called 911. The cops showed up and arrested him and took him to jail. But of course, you know, he got released. I see him down at North Beach all the time. I've avoided him since then. But there are several individuals at almost all times who are sleeping on or near North Beach. And they are attracted there by the services that Christ Lutheran Church and other churches are providing. And I think it's great that they have services there, but the feedings, the handouts, the laundry services, that's the stuff that needs to stop. And if shutting down the services is the only way to do it, then that's probably what we have to do. Thanks.
Next speaker.
Sumter English, followed by Warren Vidreen.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sumter English. I've been a resident of San Clemente since, but we bought in 2000 and we moved down here in 2001. I've been in Orange County, working in different hospitals since 1978. So I know Orange County. I know the politics of Orange County very well because that was a big part of my job. And I know what you are seeing. I want to thank you for having the opportunity to speak tonight. I started going to Christ Lutheran probably about three to four years ago. I went to other churches in town, and I know some of the people that have spoke from other churches here tonight. And I think what you need to realize is there are, it's not just Christ Lutheran that are providing the service that the prior speaker just talked about. All the churches in town work with those organizations, either through St. Clements or Our Savior or I can't remember the name of the Catholic church up on the hill by the old city council meetings. Yes, but they are taking care of the people. If the South Beach, or North Beach, I know, has expressed a problem with people that are not acting appropriately. And his wife did the right thing. Call the police. Don't punish the churches because they serve people. There is a lot of the individuals that are served by these churches that are law-abiding, very good people. They just be, are down in their luck or they've made a conscious decision to live that way. But they're not bad people. So I encourage you to think about that. Another thing that I want you to know is, at the beach church, the 25 people there for an hour do not take up too much room. As a matter of fact, I've never seen more than 10 people on the beach during the services, other than the people that are at service. And that's from North Beach down to as far as you can see on the beach. So I don't think that that's an issue you need to worry about. And I thank you for my three minutes, and I'll let others speak.
Thank you. Any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
Warren Vidreen.
I strongly support Beach Church, and I hope that you will make the proper exception or grandfathering that's required. The, I have heard a lot of heartfelt and positive statements. I've also heard things that don't make sense. The, why would a church that supplies laundry love, free laundry services, in an entirely different part of town be punished for a beach service? Why would a church that has Bible study at their property, their church, be punished for having a beach service? This is, this is going way far. And this sounds a whole lot like a personal attempt at punishing the activities of a church that are very much in line with everything I remember from the gospel. We need to treat everyone because God says, Christ says, that what you do to the least of my children, you do to me. So with that, I leave you.
Are there any other questions?
No, just the speakers.
Unless there are any questions of staff, I'll close the public hearing and we can discuss the matter. Public hearing is closed. Council members, do you wish to weigh in before a motion is made?
Sure.
Go right ahead.
In our zoning code, there's a concept called legal nonconforming. What it means is if some land use was legal at the time it was approved, then it would continue to be legal as long as that use is not discontinued. Even if the ordinance changed at a later time, make them seemingly unconforming. But because they were legal at the time they were approved, we would allow them to continue. In this case, my inclination is that the city council grants them an exception. In other words, to grandfather the special event based on this concept of legal nonconforming, given the fact that it has been a long history and it's a continuous event without a major disruption or break. And also, we have, according to the staff, we have not much complaint or code violation. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
And the other comments?
Can I just say this? My own church, San Clemente Presbyterian, there's a picture in the church of, from back in 1920s when San Clemente was first founded. And the picture is of a Bible study on the beach. And so this practice of having a church on the beach goes way, way, way back to our beginning years as a city. This idea, I believe, is part of the character of who we are as a town. And it's, I'm perfectly happy to see it continue as a tradition of our town.
Thank you, Mark. Just go right ahead.
I'll go. I strongly support the beach church and having their religious services there. The only concern I've heard from people is the feeding. And that's from the residents of Norris Beach. And I'm able to separate, you know, what the program, the feeding program that goes on there from the religious services. I have no problem, you know, extending to the 52 weeks. All the religious services they want to engage in, I encourage it. I appreciate what they're doing. I think they should be allowed to do that. The only current concern I've heard from residents is that the feeding program should not go on. And that's not a religious service. And if they are going to do that, they should do that, you know, at their church facility rather than there at North Beach because of the concerns raised by some of the North Beach community.
Yeah, I'll weigh in. I have no problem with giving their 52 weeks a year for religious services. I'm going to be agendizing later a request that we look at how we regulate things on the beach for every group, not just this, for every group in general. So I would support this if we had some specific stipulations and conditions. And one would be that there's a set time, and they already have that. That shouldn't be a problem. A decibel level on amplified music, and we can figure out whatever they're using, I'm sure is fine. We can use that, like I say, going forward, regulate, or regulate, or at least that be the guideline. That they set up, and then they clean up, and they take everything with them that they brought. And that there's no serving of any food or alcohol. I'm sorry, definitely not alcohol. Any food or any beverages of any kind, you know, before or after or during their services. And that there be no, you know, other activities or like handing out anything. And I'm not saying they're doing this. This is going to be something I'm looking at like to make, you know, blanket on all of our beaches, that they're not handing out any clothing items and any auxiliary besides just their services.
And that would be a matter that you'd agendize for a future meeting?
I'm going to agendize that for everyone. And I would say that they would have to, if we pass those, that they would have to abide by those also, as any permit do would.
Thank you. Well, my feeling on this is that, you know, the comments made tonight were that we need to obey the spirit of the law, not the law, not the spirit of the law. The good news is that the law is also on Christ Lutheran Church's side. You know, our constitution says that Congress will make no law. And Congress isn't just the federal government. Congress has any law in this nation because the constitution's supreme. No government will make any law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise of it. And because of that, I think, if anything, we should encourage our communities of faith to be more active, to be more of a benefit to people. And apparently, this church has been, and I want to see that continue. So I'm supportive as well. I'm also honored to have been the one to recommend the words above us that says, "In God we trust," and I honor that, and I'm glad that you folks do as well. So I'll entertain a motion if there's one to be made.
Can I just ask one question of the city attorney? Can we put conditions and stipulations of this permit?
Yes, you can.
At this time?
At this time, you can.
Okay. Well, I would, I would like my stipulations or the conditions to be added to this before we approve their permit.
You want to make a motion with those conditions included?
Could I make a recommendation that since you're thinking of bringing this up at the end for a future agenda item, maybe we not make the conditions at this point, but that we look at it as a whole blanket condition?
And incorporate those when we have the hearing?
Incorporate them if we, when we have that hearing.
Well, so you're saying don't give them the permit until we?
No, no, give them the permit now. But if there are conditions that we have for groups on the beach that, you know, for a future agenda item, that those would be applied to this, to everybody later.
Councilmember Lowfly, I think that would be a clear, better way to deal with it because the stuff you mentioned, set time, cleaning up before and after, that's based on code compliance or complaints from, by the people. Decibel level, there's no complaints whatsoever so far. And also, we have a noise level which governs the activities. And the feeding issue that can be covered by a future agenda is.
So they will be retroactive if we pass? And I don't think that's true.
No, it won't be retroactive. If in the future, let's say we talk about a feeding issue and we prohibit, or city pastor ordinance prohibiting any people to feed people on the beach, that would apply to any people, any, from that point on, as I go back.
That sounds like a legal question. And do we have to open the public hearing to get additional input?
No, you don't have to open to ask me questions.
Go right ahead, then. That's an interesting legal question.
My recommendation is if the desire of council is to have the permit subject to future ordinances, that you make that a condition of the permit.
Okay.
All right, yeah, so make, do you want to make the motion?
I could, yeah, I could make a motion that we give them their exemption with the stipulation that any future ordinances that would apply to any group on the beach would also apply to them.
I can second that.
That's a no-brainer. Yeah, of course.
What you think's a no-brainer, what I think, might be two different things.
Okay. Well, we're not specifically saying no feeding at this moment on the condition.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. I can support the motion as well. I don't think that we have a problem with feeding. I don't think this church actually does the feeding. I think those are other organizations. So, but, so I can, I can support the motion. So we have a motion and a second. Have you pressed your, let's do this electronically. Are we ready to rock and roll here?
Call the question, so.
Have you pressed the motion and the?
Second, there we go.
Rick, did you make the?
All right, there we are.
Okay. Let's have the vote. All in favor, passage unanimously. Thank you, one and all. Before we go to the next item, let's take a five-minute break. So we'll reconvene at seven minutes after seven.
We do not.
Item 10A, thank you. Consideration of Initiating Litigation Against the State of California, the Governor and the Attorney General Challenging Senate Bill 54 Waving Conflicts With the Plaintiff's Appropriating Funds and Hiring Litigation Counsel. This item, we have a staff report. Mr. City Manager, did you want to make a brief report before we get into discussion? Or we've seen that, we've seen the report, we've seen, read the letter, I imagine most of the folks have as well.
Right.
Do you have a preference?
Maybe just to explain to a couple of people that are unfamiliar with the action that is being proposed by the city of Huntington Beach. The city of Huntington Beach is taking legal action against the state of California in what they believe is a law that has been passed that is in conflict with federal law, which is the, the ability of local law enforcement to provide information to federal agents, either Customs and Border Patrol, ICE agents, other agents, when they are either working with detainees or other, really, when people are released from hospitals and other places, letting them know that they are being released. And the state of California has taken a stance that that action should not be taken by local law enforcement. So the, the city of Huntington Beach, I believe, is trying to clarify whether or not they are expected to follow federal law or state law. And I think that that's, that's really, really a overgeneralization, but that's at least a generalization of what the lawsuit is, is all about. And so this item was placed on the, on the calendar by members of the city council for further discussion and input from the public. And then I'm sure that the city council at the end will make a decision about whether or not we proceed or we don't.
All right. Did any council members want to make any statements before we have public comments?
I have a question of the city manager. I think I provided the third on this so that we can get more information, rather, get a report from you rather than just take this issue up without knowing what the context was. And I think one of the things that you've learned is that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that Huntington Beach is a lot different than San Clemente. Huntington Beach has their own legal department, so they don't incur the costs. They have their own police force, so they would be able to direct their police force to enforce that. And they're a charter city unlike us. And those, those differences make our situation a lot different. So even if we prevailed in this, it would have little or no impact to the city of San Clemente. Is that part of your?
Yeah, without question. Our city structure is very different than the city of Huntington Beach. And you mentioned all of those, so I won't repeat them again. But you're right, the, the, the direct impact on, on the city of San Clemente would be different than it would be the city of San, city of San Clemente. So again, I think that we would have to be looking at the higher level of whether or not we believe that the state and the federal government have placed us in a unique position of which laws do we, which law do we enforce? And that, that's the biggest probably challenge that I would see at our local level.
Any council members have any questions of staff before we hear public comments? Okay, let's, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Yes, we have several public speakers. So again, I'll call the first several names, and if you can start lining up. Rosa Mendoza, followed by Jennifer Massey, followed by Lisa H., followed by Jackie Dooley, followed by Florence Lentz, and Rosa Mendoza.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening. My name is Rosa Mendoza, and I am a resident of San Clemente for over 25 years. I've raised my family here and enjoyed the city greatly and have been, felt very safe and always welcomed. Regarding 10A, the SB, first of all, the SB 54 does not prevent federal agencies from enforcing immigration laws. It simply prevents local law enforcement from being forced to do the federal government's job. This law exists to foster trust between our local police and communities, ensuring that victims and witnesses feel safe reporting crimes without fear of deportation. Our city has scarce resources to handle local issues. Now you're considering or want to use those scarce resources to join this lawsuit? Those are national and federal issues, and we should not waste our money in another lawsuit. You are probably talking about tens or thousands of our tax monies. I do not want my tax dollars wasted on this. Thank you.
Jennifer Massey, followed by Lisa H., followed by Jackie Dooley. Jennifer?
The possibility of opening litigation against the state of California and its elected leaders is being discussed. Excuse me. I'm opposed to such litigation for some concrete reasons. Joining Huntington Beach litigation is, in my opinion, ill-advised. Since they have their own police department, Huntington Beach at least has legal standing to litigate whether or not it's a good idea to do so. San Clemente does not have its own police department. They use, utilize Orange County Sheriff's Department. We are not in charge of the sheriff's department. That is a county function. Our local immigration problem is miniscule, consisting of a few Panga boats per month. Our sheriff's department is very quick and effective at dealing with those Pangas, and is evident, evidently has a good working relationship with ICE. Thank you so much.
Lisa H., followed by Jackie Dooley.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed city council members. I'm Lisa. I'm with the Salt Mike, Salt Mike SOC, and I'm here to share our support of your efforts to join with Huntington Beach in this effort and protect our constitutional rights. Yes, they have way more autonomy and power to do this because they are a charter city. And if San Clemente is not a charter city, maybe they should revisit that. But we cannot follow an unconstitutional law just because the governor is doing so. So Huntington Beach is to the north, San Clemente is to the south. Let's shore up our shores and protect our sovereignty. And if that's against the governor, then just let it be. Thank you. God bless.
Jackie Dooley, followed by Florence Lentz, followed by Larry Colbertson.
Hi, I'm Jackie Dooley. My husband and I have been San Clemente residents and homeowners for 40 years, which, from what I've heard earlier in the meeting, that's not very long. But we've always loved being a part of the city, and we want to continue to be proud to live here. A lot of what I had written up to say has already been said in terms of the, what this law would, seeks to do. There's some real differences of opinion about what's legal and what's not legal, and I'm not sure where constitutional rights come into it. But to me, 20% of our population in San Clemente is Latino. Latinos in general, whether they're citizens or permanent residents, are currently terrified. Many of them have family and friends that are facing deportation. There's all the dreamer kids, well, no kids no more, who were brought here and have spent their entire lives here and faced with being deported, families ripped apart. We've had so much, so many laws in California's ugly racist history that have damaged that population and make them so afraid. And is that what, does our city really want to be part of that by having our excellent sheriff's deputies out there, you know, reporting people to ICE and determining whether or not they're illegal just because they arrived in a boat and they're brown? The federal government, my understanding is that the federal government is in fact principally responsible for, for, just losing my 73-year-old brain's abilities to keep going forward in a linear fashion, for enforcement of all immigration issues. We have something called the Federal Immigration Act. There's another word in it, I forget. And that specifies that it's federal agents that do this work. I mean, the California Values Act certainly reflects my values in terms of having, leaving it to our local law enforcement to do the things that we need them to do. We have a lot of other law enforcement issues in this city as we hear from the public all the time. Let's, as a previous speaker said, let's spend our tax dollars here on letting them do the work that we need them to do. So to me, this lawsuit would be ill-advised for all those same reasons that others have said, and also, in my view, humane. I want our fellow San Clemente, Clemente citizens who are Latino to feel safe in this city.
Good evening. My name is Flo Lentz. I'm a resident of San Clemente. I'm opposed to our city joining the Huntington Beach lawsuit challenging the California Values Act, SB 54. I question the reasons for joining this lawsuit at this time. My reading of the San Clemente Times article last couple of weeks ago and my further searches online, I haven't turned up any stats on the dates, times, exact locations, or arrest outcomes of the recent Panga boat landings on area beaches. I kind of presume that council is going to present these facts to the public tonight and to detail the significant public safety concerns that these incidents have unleashed. If we don't have any data on that, can that really be a good reason for entering into this lawsuit against the state of California? Another point is that if this lawsuit is successful, then presumably the city would intend to amend the scope of services with the OC Sheriff's Office to include inquiring into people's immigration status, say, through a routine traffic stop, turning people over to immigration officers without probable cause, participating in arrests based on civil immigration warrants, performing actual functions of immigration agents, or perhaps even acting under their direct supervision. One thing that's true right now is that there's an atmosphere of fear sweeping the nation. We're not removed from it here. No matter what our political views are, we all feel it, we all know it. We have to acknowledge that we're in a wider moment here. We can't pretend it's not happening because there's a clearly stated top-down goal coming straight from the federal government that we do mass deportations, mass detentions. History tells us exactly where this fever can lead, way beyond the targeted, original targeted groups and where, and where it can end. So the city's joining this lawsuit is a loud, unnecessary, in-your-face posture. It says to our historically diverse community, to our neighbors, to thousands of visitors, that we consider the current fear of immigrants hysteria valid. We're going to double down on it. So joining the Huntington Beach lawsuit will make national news. In fact, could it be that rather than preventing local Panga boat crime wave, the publicity, the fiery publicity that would come with this is what this is all about? Thank you.
Larry Colbertson, followed by Bree Conlin, followed by Malani Yasli, followed by Anthony Vela. Larry?
Larry, Larry Colbertson. I'm supportive of us joining Huntington Beach in the lawsuit. I've watched with dismay over the past 40-plus years as our government has incrementally given more and more privileges to illegal immigrants. For years, California legislators have, legislators have been tripping all over themselves trying to give more, see who can give more benefits to the illegals. What they've been doing is wrong. It's destroying our country, and it encourages even more illegal immigration. What the California legislature did in 2017 with Senate Bill 54, the California Values Act, far surpassed their former accomplishments. They outlawed most cooperation between federal immigration officials and local officials. I believe that what they did was antisocial. We have a complex immigration system in place to protect our country. We have officials to enforce the laws. If the people of the city or the state do not approve of these laws, they should work within the system to try to change those laws. To place impediments in the way of officials trying to enforce our laws tears our society apart. This is definitely an issue that affects the citizens of San Clemente and is something that is appropriate for our city to be involved in. Please join the city of Huntington Beach in the complaint against the state of California. Thank you.
Bree Conlin, followed by Malani Yasli, followed by Anthony Vela, followed by Louise Herbert.
Hi. Good evening. I'm here as a concerned resident and taxpayer of San Clemente. I want to address the reckless fiscal decision of joining litigation against the state of California to challenge SB 54. Our city has real urgent needs, public safety, infrastructure, and community service that require responsible financial management. We see the issues in North Beach that people have spoke about. I want our taxpayer money to go there. We're considering wasting these dollars on a lawsuit that has little chance of success and serves no practical benefit to our city. This litigation is a political stunt, not a sound investment. Fighting the state in court will drain resources, rack up legal fees, and ultimately leave us footing the bill for an unnecessary legal battle. Our budget should serve the people of San Clemente, not political agendas. I urge you to reject this misuse of funds and focus on the issues that truly matter to our community. Thank you.
Malani Yasli, followed by Anthony Vela, followed by Louise Herbert.
My name is Malani Yasli. I am a San Clemente resident, and I'm very nervous. I oppose the use of city funds to sue the state of California. Not only are we wasting the city's resources that we could definitely use here, it wastes those of the state of California at the same time. Any small amount of budget that we would approve would cascade exponentially, as everybody has said, a lot of people have said tonight, into just so much more money being spent very quickly. If this was truly about trying to reduce criminal activity when we've been struggling and begging as a community to assign funds over the years for our own police force, more activities in parks near schools to curb gang activities, et cetera, why now? Why this? SB 54 protects our neighbors, our friends, and active and viable tax-paying members of our community. Please make the right choice to protect us from actionable criminals. I was hesitant, I was tempted, and going back I was hesitant, I was tempted, and going back and forth as to whether or not I should use a Bible quote, but it seems pretty fitting to my surprise. Leviticus 1933, verses 33 to 34. "When a foreigner resides with you in your land, you must not oppress him. You must treat the foreigner living among you as native-born, and love him as yourself; for you were foreigners in the land of Egypt." Thank you for your time.
Anthony Vela, followed by Louise Herbert, followed by Angela Watts, followed by Cheryl Kelly.
Mayor, council members, my name is Anthony Vela. I've been a resident of San Clemente for the past 15 years. My grandmother came to America from Mexico. It took her about 40 years to become a citizen, not because she didn't want to, it just, there was a lot of red tape to jump through. It was her dream to be a citizen and to vote. I lived that for my entire life while my grandmother was alive. I'm not sure if everyone realizes just how difficult it is for some of these hard-working citizens of the world like my grandmother to become a citizen, but just because somebody is not one does not mean they're not trying to become one. Reading the report, $100,000 approximately was the number that I read as to how much this litigation, joining this current litigation would cost. And that's an approximate, excuse me, an approximation because there's no real telling how much it's going to cost once you get started. $100,000 could be used for so many other things, like the things that have been discussed. My daughter goes to Las Palmas Elementary School, a school that needs a lot more funding, like many of our schools, but the school is the first school in San Clemente. The city San Clemente, that is Spanish, because of people that came from Mexico. And the irony here that we are going to use our city funds to go towards something that, I understand the reasons why that we want to get people out of our country and city that maybe have done wrong things, but there are a lot more people that have done the right things. And the right thing in this circumstance, we should think about what would God do? Because we've been talking about God, and the Bible verse that was just read, I think, sums it all up. But also think about the people that this will affect, not only by what we're choosing to do with this $100,000 and beyond, but also the message that's sending to our citizens and about, and about our city. Our city is rooted in the Mexicans' culture and the Spanish language. Our city is diverse, and diversity is part of the mission statement of the city of San Clemente. So I'm in strong opposition to San Clemente joining in this litigation because I would, I think, and I believe that it is not only a misuse of funds, but it would also be a very, very, very bad message to send to our citizens and to the people that have been helping our city strive to the great city that it is. Thank you very much for your time.
Louise Herbert, followed by Angela Watts, followed by Cheryl Kelly, followed by Linda Moore. Louise Herbert?
Again, Louise Herbert, 41 years plus in town. Mayor No Block's proposal to join Huntington Beach in this frivolous lawsuit is not only a waste of money, time, but is outside your purview. As California State Attorney General Rob Bonta said last night at a local meeting, that Huntington Beach's lawsuit will be ineffective and unsuccessful. So let us not tie ourselves to their tail. This is just another shiny ball tossed out to meet primarily the mayor's personal agenda, as were his attempts to make San Clemente an abortion-free city, a gun sanctuary, and most recently, his attempt to alter our legal voting criteria to make it more difficult to cast our votes. Well, my vote right now is no on No Block. We cannot afford to take a yes or move in this direction financially, emotionally, spiritually, and in the sense of what San Clemente is built on. Thank you.
Angela Watts, followed by Cheryl Kelly, followed by Linda Moore, followed by Mia Marvin.
Good evening, I'm Angela Watts, and I'm pretty upset and annoyed that we're even here tonight and I'm not with my children as I should be, and that I have to be here to speak, so excuse me, because I'm going to be very direct. Tonight, we're here because Mayor No Block wants to drag San Clemente into a costly and pointless lawsuit that Victor, you already knew, you already knew. It's pointless and is going to cost us a lot of money. This has nothing to do with making our city safer or improving the lives of residents. This is purely a political move with no benefit to San Clemente, and it comes at a high price. I'm going to skip over my parts about how high it is, because we've already heard about it, but our own sheriff's department made it clear on January 27th, when Sheriff Barnes made a statement, that immigration enforcement is a federal responsibility, and it is not part of the sheriff's mission. His focus is on state and local laws, keeping us safe from actual threats and responding to calls for service regardless of a person's immigration status. Remember, they won't even enforce basic things like e-bike regulations. They are not going to enforce this. So what exactly are we fighting for? And why are we throwing our tax dollars for a legal stunt that will have no practical impact on our city? Meanwhile, our actual issues that affect our daily lives are being ignored, like our beach trail that's been closed over a year, which, thank you Victor, I love that it's being worked on, cutting off access to one of our most beloved assets, our coastal erosion that threatens our beaches, public safety. We do not need legal distractions. Now, Mayor No Block, you're not fighting for San Clemente? You're using our community to score political points. That's not leadership. It's self-interest at our expense. This is, what, the fourth time you've done this? This is a waste of time, quite frankly, is grounds for recall in your position and being on our council. Victor, you gained a lot of respect as mayor while focusing on our beaches and sand. Can you continue that promise and put that money where it should be going and where people care about? And Councilmember Loeffler, you ran as a nonpartisan candidate, and I'm really proud to see all your District 3 citizens here. Now, promising to represent the best interests of San Clemente, tonight is your moment to stand by that promise, vote against this distraction, and show you prioritize the real needs of the people who elected you. Thank you.
Cheryl Kelly, followed by Linda Moore, followed by Mia Marvin, followed by Warren Vedreen. Cheryl?
Yes, I'm Cheryl Kelly. I'm a 35-year taxpayer in this wonderful city. Born and raised in Orange County, love it here. And the speech I wrote, I'm not going to go for because everybody already pretty much said what I said, but all I have to say is, come on already, stop with the damn political stunts. Stick with patching potholes, keeping the streetlights on, keeping sand on the beach and keeping garbage out of the, out of the parks. Just keep it real, keep it local. Thank you.
Linda Moore, followed by Mia Marvin.
I'm very similar. I am here to remind the council and citizens of San Clemente that Steve No Block, as a council member, once wanted to make our city a sanctuary of life. He was actually going to try to make abortion illegal in San Clemente. Now, you think about the lawsuits that that would have generated. Can you just imagine that? Now with his proposal to join Huntington Beach lawsuit, he is once again dragging national politics into our city council business, when our city council already has plenty to do, which is regular city business. And I just want to, want to say to you, Steve No Block, please, keep your personal politics to yourself, though you won't look at me now, I see. And as another reminder, when you ran for office in a regular general election of the whole population of San Clemente, not a district election, you won by only 23 votes. You certainly do not have much of a mandate to impose your own personal politics onto our city council. Thank you.
Mia Marvin, followed by Warren Vedreen, followed by Petty Van Recken.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Mia Marvin, and I would really like to approach this issue from a humane standpoint and what the implications of this litigation would mean. I moved to San Clemente in eighth grade. I was very excited to live here. I was going through some very, very challenging things at the time, and San Clemente represented a beacon of opportunity for me. Before I begin this speech, I'd like to ask something of all of you. Abandon your preconceived notions and try to listen. I know it's very hard, and I recognize everyone will always have their opinions, it's hard to sway most, but I'm up here talking to all of you as a high school student, a student who dreads seeing her classmates be torn out of their lives or ripped apart from their families. I'd like each and every one of you to think about a loved one, how much you cherish their presence in your life. Then imagine them being taken away from you and shipped off like they were as important as a piece of furniture. These are people, not objects. They are human beings who deserve humanity. They are human beings who might have come to this country in hopes of the American dream, freedom and opportunity, right? Pull yourself up from the bootstraps. Except not everybody is fortunate enough to be born into such a world. I am a white, upper-middle-class girl who's fortunate to be born into my situation, so I'm not going to stand here and pretend like I know the struggles of being an immigrant. But I can tell you that my mom sacrificed so much and is the hardest worker I know, and I would be absolutely heartbroken if she was torn for me. Luckily, I don't have to think about that. But what about those who do not have that privilege? What about those who do not have such luck? Do they deserve to be discarded for trying to make luck for themselves, for their children? Mr. Mayor, you have children. I'd like to ask you, if the roles were reversed, if you came to the greatest country in the world to try to give them a shot, to keep them safe, would you want to be disregarded just because you were not born here? Each and every person here has friends, family, and loved ones. This is what these people are to someone else. They are mothers, fathers, sisters, wives, husbands. The implications of this lawsuit would destroy our community and ruin our potential. Let us reflect what so many of us claim our country to be, a place of freedom and opportunity. Let San Clemente remain the compassionate, beautiful, kind town 13-year-old me thought it would be. And for those of you who claim to be followers of Jesus Christ, remember what he said, Matthew 22:40. "And the second is like unto it: Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself." Thank you.
Warren Vedreen, followed by Petty Van Recken, followed by Erin Maloney, followed by Miranda Arzola. Warren Vedreen?
Well, I'm Warren Vedreen, and those of you who've gotten to know me well know that I'm a, I'm a fiscal conservative. So I'm going to approach this from that point of view. There have been several other ways this has been approached already. I'm opposed to the litigation for some concrete reasons. Joining Huntington Beach's litigation is ill-advised. Since they have their own police department, Huntington Beach at least has legal standing to litigate, whether it's a good idea or not. San Clemente doesn't have their own police. They utilize Orange County Sheriff's Department. We're not in charge of the Sheriff's Department. That's a county function. Our local immigration problem is pretty minuscule. It consists of a few Panga boats per month. Only a minority of them scatter life preservers on our beaches, so that indicates that the majority of the Pangas are transporting drugs, not immigrants. Our Sheriff's Department is very quick and effective at dealing with these Pangas, and they evidently have a good working relationship with ICE. ICE shows up right there, they work very well together, and the, don't believe the, don't believe the idea that this state, these state laws are global. They are not. Let us then avoid inadvertently screwing up the relationship between the Sheriff's Department and ICE, just for instance. But here, our city government has limited revenues. We're dealing with some expensive problems, including crumbling bluffs and the sand erosion. Our council has a record of unnecessary litigation and inserting themselves into extraneous matters. We must wean ourselves from such habits. Let's stick to local issues. For instance, okay, on a positive note, Mayor No Block has had a very good idea. He's proposed a faster, cheaper approach to sand replenishment. I listened to him present it at the community coffee. Oh, well, that's it. So stick to that.
Petty Van Recken, followed by Erin Maloney, followed by Miranda Arzola, followed by Sharon Jones.
My name is Petty Van Recken. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of San Clemente. However, I am speaking to you today as, as Director of the advocacy for the League of Women Voters of the Orange Coast. The League of Women Voters opposes what your action. The League supports a system for individuals living in the country without legal permission to earn legal status, including citizenship, by paying taxes, studying civics, and meeting other relevant criteria. While policy reforms include a path to legal status, remain unachieved, the League does not support supporting these immigrants who have no history of major or violent criminal activity. We continue to call on Congress to provide fair and humane immigration reform. Meanwhile, each state has its own policy regarding immigrants. As you know, State Bill 54, signed by Governor Jerry Brown in 2017, it increased the protections for immigrants and made our state a sanctuary state. The measure prohibits local law enforcement agencies from using resources to investigate, detain, report, or arrest people for immigration violations. And recently, as Angela pointed out, OC Sheriff Don Barnes, he issued the following statement, quote, "Securing the border and enforcing immigration law are important responsibilities of the federal government. The Orange County Sheriff's Department does not enforce federal immigration law. It is not part of our primary mission and remain focused on violations of state and local laws," unquote. So all of the above is to assert that sanctuary status for immigrants is a state and possibly a federal issue. It is not an issue for San Clemente or any California city. The legal costs and the staff time to pursue a rejection of sanctuary city status would be enormous, and these actions would add to the worry and fear of our many valued, hard-working, tax-paying residents. Thank you.
Erin Maloney, San Clemente resident. I am here to oppose this agenda item and share my thoughts on this. So many amazing points have been made. A lot of this is redundant, but here it goes. A lot of this is redundant, but here it goes. So the last time I was here at a city council meeting a few months ago was with my 10-year-old son, Emmett. He was invited by Rick, Rick Loffler. We met Rick at District Three City Council Debate Forum, where Emmett brought up a local concern about the lack of trash cans at Linda Lane. And it turns out Rick kept thinking about Emmett. And a couple of days later, through confluence of kismet connections and chance conversations, he found Emmett through a mutual mom friend of ours at the Chamber of Commerce. So I thought that was so cool. Emmett accepted Rick's invitation, addressed the council with his concern. He met Mayor Cabral, who presented him with a city coin that he still keeps on his little nightstand to this day. So this was a formidable and memorable experience for him and a proud moment for his parents and the people who love him, and really highlights the power that this council possesses. When we see members of the council, for example, at the Christmas tree lighting, Emmett still beams with pride, recalls his visit here, and proclaims to his friends, "I know the mayor, yes, and City Councilman Rick is my best friend." That may be a bit of a stretch, but a 10-year-old's not going to let the facts get in the way of a good story to their friends. And Rick and I also had some meaningful exchange where despite our differing political leanings, we were able to come together acknowledging the stresses of federal elections and how our bond over the interests and experiences of our children are what really counts. When Emmett asked me today why I was coming back, I told him that I thought the city was not spending our financial resources wisely and that they were looking to spend $100,000 to join a lawsuit against the state of California. As a family, we talked about ways that money could be used for good here in the city, how we could invest in community bonding and unifying action, giving families enriching experiences like the one Emmett had here. So we came around to the fact that for the first time, the city of San Clemente was charging San Clemente Little League Baseball and softball field fees this season. In the past, in exchange for field access the league would care for and maintain these fields for the city and the community, keeping them clean and tidy. These city fees have contributed and resulted in some hefty registration costs for local families. I had to spend just shy of $800 this year for my two kids to play baseball. So if there's $100K of petty cash burning a hole in your pockets, let's use it to make these fields accessible and send an example of unity and community bonding for our kids. Thank you.
Miranda Arzola, followed by Sharon Jones, followed by Stephen Jones, followed by Amy Bean. Miranda?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Miranda Arzola. I have a dream. I have a dream that after I graduate San Clemente High School this June, I will attend a four-year university to become a doctor and give back to the community that has given me so much. I am very involved in the city from being in clubs at school and a confirmation leader at Our Lady of Fatima. And I have come tonight to be the voice others don't have. What you are trying to do with this lawsuit is unconstitutional, and it is not your job, Mayor, and it is not the city's job to enforce immigration laws. It is the federal government's job. If you want to implement immigration laws, then leave your chair in the council and go work for the federal government. Otherwise, stop trying to do someone else's job and stick to doing your job the right way. What you are trying to do with this lawsuit for the city of San Clemente is senseless. And I would think, as a mayor, you would have better things to do than worry about hard-working immigrants who positively impact San Clemente every day. I don't want to think that when, God forbid, I have to call the police, I feel forced not to because of the racial profiling your lawsuit will increase. Additionally, you know our police department won't enforce this lawsuit, so it is a waste of their time. You're wasting the time of our police officers who protect our city every day. People feel safe with police. Well, they are supposed to. That's what you would think. Well, with your lawsuit, it will only scare our city and hinder the trust of police and residents. Thank you.
Sharon Jones, followed by Stephen Jones, followed by Amy Bean.
Hi there. I'm Sharon Jones. I live here in San Clemente. And there's so much to say. But bottom line is, this is a totally inappropriate use of the city funds over such a highly, highly partisan issue. And you are here to serve us, the community, not to serve Donald Trump.
Jones, followed by Amy Bean, followed by Alexis D., followed by Alyssa Flint.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Stephen Jones. I've got to get this higher here. I've lived in San Clemente for five years. And I agree with -- I'm opposed to the city joining in this lawsuit. And I agree with what everybody, all the other opponents of that have said. So I'm not going to repeat what they've said. But I have another point to make. Let's assume, just for sake of discussion only, that a majority of this council is in favor of overturning that law, the law that prevents cities from participating in enforcement of immigration. But that's not enough for the city to decide to join in the lawsuit. The next thing you have to decide is what good is it going to do for the city to join in this lawsuit? Can't the city of Huntington Beach represent its own interests? Is it going to be more likely that the city of Huntington Beach will win the lawsuit if San Clemente joins in a lawsuit? I don't think so. I mean, the city of Huntington Beach is a big city. They've got lots of resources. I'm sure they have very good attorneys. And also, whoever wins at the trial level, there's probably going to be an appeal. And whatever that appeal is, that's going to apply, however that comes out, that's going to apply to all the cities of California. So we don't need to join in this lawsuit in order to have the results of this lawsuit impact the city. Huntington Beach is taking care of that for us. And it's not going to do us any good to join in that lawsuit. It's just going to be a waste of taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Amy Bean, followed by Alexis D., followed by Alyssa Flint, and then Amanda Quintanilla.
Esteemed members of the council, my name is Amy Bean, and I'm a resident of North Beach, a mom, and an engaged member of this community. I strongly oppose us joining in this lawsuit with Huntington Beach. It's not a prudent use of our city's budget, and it will have a negative impact in our community. We've already heard the key differences between our city and Huntington Beach. In 2018, Huntington Beach already sued the state over SB 54 and lost, costing taxpayers significant resources. The lawsuit also relies on national crime statistics that do not accurately reflect our local situation, misrepresenting real dynamics in San Clemente. More relevant studies, such as one from UC Irvine, found no correlation between immigration patterns and violent crime. The point is that the need and the impact locally is completely unclear. Pursuing another lawsuit with uncertain outcomes would divert funds away from other important priorities in our city. The lawsuit does not reflect San Clemente's values or our current priorities. We've already seen negative impacts of these executive orders of mass deportation in our community and in our schools. Families here are living in fear. Students are struggling. And this lawsuit would only add to that instability. And it will undermine public trust, as we've heard. Our resources should be spent where they can make a difference on our community and not on a divisive, costly legal battle. I urge you to oppose this action.
Alexis D., followed by Alyssa Flint, followed by Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Catherine Hall.
Hi. I was not going to come up here to speak initially because I'm terrified of speaking in front of other people. But listening to the last group over the last issue, the beach church issue, made me feel compelled to come up here. Several people who were defending their church spoke of the positive influence the church has on them and how it encourages them to treat all people with kindness and respect and provide them with charity and opportunity. Where are these beliefs when it comes to our immigrant community? Do these beliefs only extend to our citizens? SB 54 keeps our schools, churches, hospitals as safe places. Do you really want local law enforcement disrupting children and families while they're trying to learn or worship? Where are your Christian values now? If San Clemente is such a Christian town, as this council seems to believe it is from the writing on your wall, this seems quite hypocritical. Where will the kindness and trust be in our community? Not only do I not want my taxpayer dollars spent on this, but I don't want my children's friends afraid to go to school or to the hospital if they get sick, or to their church if they choose to worship. Don't waste our police resources and tax money on this politicized and frankly immoral agenda. Additionally, and I'm not a lawyer, I don't know a lot about this, but Huntington Beach is a charter city, and we are not. They also have their own police force, as other people have reported. They already have tried this technique to sue the state over California housing rules. And the Ninth Circuit Court already ruled Huntington Beach cannot bring federal claims against California. We are not a charter city, and we have even less ability to claim this. Huntington Beach failed at this as recently as 2023. The city lacked standing to bring the suit against California. This was less than two years ago. Why are we wasting money doing this again? Please reject this proposal and do the kind, decent, and if you are religious, Christian thing. Thank you.
Alyssa Flint, followed by Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Catherine Hall, followed by Roxane Gillette.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alyssa Flint. I've been living in San Clemente for 24 years, and I love this community. But I really think that going into litigation for this program of what -- I'm not sorry. I'm very nervous about being -- I'm not used to this. But I oppose spending our tax money to do what really is only going to lawyers. It seems like what everybody else has been saying. I agree with the opposition of this, and I don't want to waste our money. I'm going to make it short and sweet. Please do not waste our money on just paying lawyers where we're not going to win anything. So thank you.
Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Catherine Hall.
So I wasn't prepared to speak tonight on this matter. And it was three council members that put this on the city's agenda. I'm a strong supporter of the Constitution. I'm supportive of our president. And to that effect, I think that our police force, OCSD, should work collaboratively with state and federal officials. It takes effort from everybody to help in these matters. So recently, there was a lawsuit where grants pass. And I think the city of San Clemente filed an amicus brief, and just wondering if that could be done to basically decrease the cost of attorney's fees. And I am in support of this. I've been a resident over 50 years. And when I go down to Sandy Gille County and I am pulled over, you know, when there's some searches there, and they'll ask me my immigration status or my naturalization, or I take pride in that. I definitely like the fact that people, that I am asked, because that's like running a credit card, asking for your identification. And I'm supportive of that. And it's -- I know it's equating that, but it's just that extra effort of knowing that people are doing their job. People are looking out for the best interest. And so just I hope that we can file an amicus brief to kind of decrease the attorney's fees and costs. But I am in support of this in supporting Huntington Beach. Thank you very much.
Catherine Hall, followed by Roxane Gillette, followed by Elizabeth Swenson.
Mayor and council members, I am not in favor of this. I have listened to all the other presenters, and I decided not to pull my speech out because it's all been covered. You've had emotional appeals, logical appeals, fiscal appeals, and I agree with all of those things. I think that our humanity as a city is on the line here and our fiscal responsibility to the citizens of this city. I do not want my taxpayers' money or the staff time going to what appears to be a frivolous political stunt. So please, do not do this. Let us go about our way. Let the national government handle immigration. Let the state step in where they need. Let the Coast Guard do what they need to do. That is not what we put people in the city council to do. You are to be fiscally responsible, take care of our money, and spend it on things that benefit the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Roxane Gillette, followed by Elizabeth Swenson.
Hi, I'm Roxane Gilotti. Please give me a little grace. I'm horrible at public speaking. I am definitely opposed to this. I just wanted to say I have a little bit of an interesting perspective because I have a big family of first responders. Both my dad and brother are firefighters up in LA. And since the increase in ICE raids, they have been seeing firsthand people too scared to get lifesaving aid because they're scared of deportation. And just seeing our city potentially support something that it could harm human beings because regardless of immigration status, that's what they are, human beings, is just honestly kind of heinous. So please, don't support this because it's potentially going to result in people dying, and that's horrible. So I hope that you guys have the same morals as me and don't agree with that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Liz Swenson. I am a mom to three perfect little kiddos at Las Palmas Elementary. I'm also a teacher. I've been teaching in our district for nearly 20 years. And I'm here to oppose the proposal to enter a pointless and frivolous lawsuit that's only purpose I can see is as a political stunt. But many people have said that tonight. What I wanted to speak to is the message this sends our community. So I wanted to share with you something that happened Friday. I attended a PTA meeting because I have three kids at Las Palmas Elementary, and I'm grateful that I had the opportunity to go. I'm helping out with the fifth grade send-off. So I was there. And in that room, someone asked about the ICE raids and what that means for our school and what's going to happen. And they asked the principal. And the principal really didn't know. And the entire room, full of families, moms, that just love their children and want to support their children, began to cry. Every single person in that room was crying, the principal included. These are the parents of my children's friends. Everyone is already in terror. If we enact this, it just sends the message that you don't care about these families, that we want to abandon them in a moment when they're already so scared. I know that I want to support my friends, my kids' friends, families, especially right now. Thank you.
Tony Rubellino.
Okay, just making sure I hear. I had Jiffy back there doing a slice across the neck. I'm not sure. She didn't like my hat, I guess. I'm not sure, she didn't like my hat, I guess. Too bad, Jiffy, free speech, right?
Please address the council.
Sure. So, Tom Homan, the borders czar, is doing absolutely just a knock-down fantastic job. He has created an environment where legal issues are going to be addressed. And it's interesting, I'm listening to a lot of the arguments here and people are failing to include one key context word before immigrant and that's illegal. And that's the issue that we're facing right now is that this is not legal immigrants that we're discussing, we're discussing illegal immigrants. Also, with the, one of the most recent executive orders, the term illegal alien is actually the new applicable term to be used. And so, I am absolutely supportive of council's decision if they decide to go ahead and join up with Huntington Beach. And when you hear the twisting of scripture that I've heard tonight, when you hear the pleas for the illegal immigrants and the families and the really heartfelt, gut-wrenching stories, I think that really when it comes down to it, there is one thing to respond: Lakin Riley. Lakin Riley. And you can hear a lot of gasping, which is really, really unfortunate, really sad, that it's taking our youth, our female college students, high school students, to be ripped from their childhoods, to have it absolutely demolished and their families destroyed as a result of illegal immigration. And I think that this is absolutely something that the council should consider supporting, working closely with ICE, Tom Homan, who is doing, again, a fantastic job in getting the laws enforced. And I hope that you will have some positive deliberation over the issue. Thank you very much.
Allison Schumacher.
I had not intended to speak, but when I heard the daughter of the firefighter, I agree with all the, well, I'm definitely opposed and I agree with the moral argument and the fiscal argument, but it made me think about the fact that I live at the Canyons and I walk the beaches of San Clemente. And were the Palisades or the Altadena fires to happen to us? And I'm sure we've all felt the fear of the possibility and the risk of that in the last few weeks. Are we even remotely prepared as a city? Because I look at Trafalgar Canyon where I live and it's not clear. I read recently that we're going to bring the goats in, but I thought, how fiscally prepared are we for the things we haven't talked about tonight? For the environmental possibilities that are incredibly evident right now, not just in our town, but in the whole of California, California writ large, our whole region writ large? And I just think, I feel absolute certainty that none of the biblical quotes tonight were twisted and that the Statue of Liberty, "Give us your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free," is not twisted. Freedom is not twisted. And I would hate, I would hate to see the hard-working, legal or illegal, people who are paying their taxes and trying to get freedom from oppression not have a voice in their future, their children's, their grandchildren's, the legacies of their lives. And I do believe that our council is academic, intelligent, and moral enough to not take their fruitless and, quite frankly, depraved political agenda to this council and to this city. You owe this city because you work for us. Thank you.
That is it for speaker cards.
Okay, if there's no other speakers, would the council like to weigh in? Let me, let me just say, before we start that, there was one issue that I regret. Most of the comments tonight were made about money and the cost and the resources. I regret not notifying staff earlier that any litigation that we entered into in this matter would cost the city absolutely zero. Huntington Beach has a nonprofit legal firm called the America First Legal Team. It's a 501(c)(3). They're basically paying 100% of the legal fees, so the city wouldn't endure, wouldn't cost, wouldn't cost a penny even in litigation costs or in court-related costs. So, I regret not making that clear so that the staff would not come in with a suggestion of, you know, a high dollar amount, but that wasn't the case. But I just wanted to mention that because that is the fact of the matter. Go ahead, Victor.
Yeah. Let me explain procedurally how this, how my third came about is, just for the record, is that, you know, oftentimes we get up here and we have a motion and a second made. And occasionally I'll make the third and I make the third because without a third, we get no report from our city officials. We just have to, the issue come up, there's no background, there's no discussion of the merits, we don't go talk to other legal departments. I often make, and you'll see other members make a third too, and that's once a motion's been made and seconded, only for the purpose of getting real information and a report in our hand so we can see what, what that data says. So, I just wanted to explain that as a background. Second, I actually think this is a federal issue. I agree with, you know, a lot of the comments that were made. Whether we agree or disagree, I think, you know, part of what the administration has decided was to target violent, criminal aliens. I think that's appropriate, but it's not a job for our city to get involved with. It's, it's a federal issue and I've often talked about what's an appropriate issue for our city and what isn't. And this is one that falls, based on the report that I reviewed at least, that's not in the city's purview. It's much outside of our purview, in fact. I think that, as I mentioned earlier through my questioning, that if you look at legally, the situation of the other city, they're a charter community, they have their own police force, they have their own law department that will cover the costs of defending this and pursuing it. So, and they're in a much different situation and if they were to win, which they may or may not, I don't know, it would have a direct impact on them in the end. My analysis, reading the information provided, that it would have no impact on San Clemente. So, it would be futile for us to spend any amount of money to get engaged in this, even if it is given by somebody else. It's my personal view. And I think it's not, not in the best interests of our cities and our residents to pursue this.
Yeah, it's coming up right there. Thank you. Next slide, please. So, a lot of this has been said, I just want to give a little clarification on some of the things of what it actually is Senate Bill 54. It's also titled California Values Act. It came about in 2017. What it actually does, it prevents state and local law enforcement agencies from using their resources on behalf of federal immigration enforcement agencies. The law allows for cooperation between local, state, and federal law enforcement. Next slide, please. So, it prevents local law enforcement agencies from detaining undocumented immigrants who are eligible for deportation by ICE for violating immigration laws, exception when undocumented immigrants have been convicted of serious or violent felonies or of misdemeanors that can be classified as such felonies. So, what does this mean? It means our sheriffs and our police officers are not immigration officers. Their job is to focus on our citizens, keeping our citizens safe, stopping crime. That's what they're supposed to do. If a person is arrested and is found out they do have legal residence, they do not have legal residence status, officers will hand them over to ICE and they will work in cooperation with them. Next slide, please. This is from Sheriff Don Barnes. The Orange County Sheriff's Department will provide for your safety and respond to your calls for service regardless of your immigration status. We do not and never will ask the immigration status of victims, witnesses, suspects, or those who call to report crimes. We enforce state and local laws equally, without bias and without concern for your citizenship. That has not and will not change. This is really important for our residents of this community to hear this. Whatever your immigration status, our firefighters, our police officers, our lifeguards, they will still be there to help you. And that was heart-wrenching to hear the young lady talk about her family in Los Angeles, firefighters up there and hearing these stories. We're going to see that here as well. And I just want the community to know, your safety comes first, no matter who you are. Next slide, please. Yeah, sorry. There have been previous legal challenges. In 2018, the United States Department of Justice, then led by President Trump, filed suit against California. The US Department of Justice argued that the law was unconstitutional. The district court stated, "The court does not find any indication in the cited federal statutes that Congress intended for states to have no oversight over detention facilities operating within their borders." In essence, the court sided with the state of California upholding SB 54. The Supreme Court did not take that case up, meaning that it stood. So, this case has essentially already been decided by the Supreme Court, by our federal courts, that the California state law is practical, is constitutional, and that states' rights, in this case, win over federal rights. Next slide, please. So, let's compare this to Huntington Beach. A lot of these things have, we've already talked about, but again, Huntington Beach has their own police force. San Clemente does not. They are a charter city. San Clemente is not. Part of this issue is that, well, as our, because we are a charter city, does this mean that we have exception to state law? The courts will figure that out, but San Clemente is not a charter city, so we should not be taking this case on. This will cost hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars. Now, you mentioned that it will be free of cost, but there are a lot of unseen costs that come along when you sue a state. A lot of costs of us being targeted for, hey, should we get more sand on the beach or should we let OCTA put in more riprap? And this is how that political game works, but I for one would rather work in partnership with the state to get the things to help our community, to help our citizens out, rather than put a target on our back. Next slide, please. So, we don't want to be Huntington Beach. We, San Clemente, don't want to get involved in national politics. We have seen this over and over and over again. Every time we bring something up, we go down this road of saying, oh, should we be, become a sanctuary-for-life city? And over and over and over again, the community comes out and says, no, we don't. We don't want to get involved in this. We saw it with our proposition to amend how we do our voting rights and mail-in ballots. And again, the community comes out and says, no, we don't want to do this. San Clemente wants to follow the law. San Clemente wants to be fiscally conservative. This is a case that's already been decided by the courts. We have no reason to get involved in it. Sorry, I think I have one more. No, that's it. All right, thank you.
Mr. Zhu, Zen Wu?
Okay. I keep it simple. I believe I was elected to keep my head down and work on local issues. On this, joining Huntington Beach for the lawsuit, I do believe this is the best use of our taxpayer funds. I can come back with 100 uses that we can use the money in a better way. I don't see a clear benefit to San Clemente and I think this, this action would be divisive. It's highly politically charged and I don't believe San Clemente needs this publicity. So, I'm not going to support it.
Well, thank you, Angela, for reminding me that, yes, I am a nonpartisan candidate when I ran and I am. Everybody knows I'm a conservative, but I am nonpartisan. And I'm glad that you remind me of that and I'm glad Ms. Maloney reminded me about my constituents in District 3 and my, everybody's my constituent in this city. And listening to everyone talk, and I know there's a lot of people that brought up the money issue and even, I think though, if I got the, what they were trying to say is, I think if even you know it doesn't cost a dime, I still don't think that you were in favor of this. It's, oh, it's free then we'll do it. So, I don't, I don't really think that that's a, that's a part of this. I do want to tell you a little bit about what I think about immigration, just so you know. I'm perfectly fine with ICE serving warrants and removing the criminal element of illegal aliens, like they're doing, like they stepped up. I'm totally in favor and support that. Well, you see, the nonpartisan, I'm thinking of both sides. So, anyway, but I'm also in favor of streamlining the immigration system to get people here legally so they can work and live here. I think that's a great thing and I'm dismayed that we haven't made that improvement before. The Lakin Riley law was brought up and it passed nonpartisan, I mean bipartisan, I should say. It passed, so we can deal with that element of illegal, if you want to call them illegal aliens. Also, many people brought, oh, by the way, don't put up my slides, Laura, because after seeing Mark's presentation, mine, mine are like, they look like they're in crayon and I just, there's the teacher coming out, so I don't want you to even show those. But many people, and Mark spoke about Sheriff Barnes, and I know we have three OCSD, we have a sergeant, we have a chief and a captain, maybe we have two chiefs, I'm not 100% sure, but they're at the back of the room.
Three chiefs.
Three chiefs, oh, Screeter's a chief now? Okay. So, anyway, on the OCSD side of it, and this is the practical part in me, and I know a little bit about Sheriff Barnes and any of the three OCSD that want to step up and, you know, say something that might not be true of this, please, please do. I'm not going to embarrass you by calling you up, but I do believe that Sheriff Barnes, when he's, I know a lot about him, I don't agree with all of his policies, I definitely don't, but I do know when he says something, he means it, he thinks this out. And the fact that he gave the Orange County Register the article that was written about him on January 29th, the timing of this was not a coincidence. To me, it was in response to the Huntington Beach lawsuit. He said very clear, and it's been quoted here many times, but I'll just take the last part of it. "We do not and never will ask the immigration status of victims, witnesses, suspects, or those who report crimes. We enforce state and local laws equally, without bias and without concern for your citizenship." This has not and will not change. I believe that of Sheriff Barnes when he says that. No matter what happens with this lawsuit, that will not change. So, it will not affect San Clemente. Let's be practical. I do not support this resolution and I'm ready to make a...
Thank you. I asked for this item to come up because I think it's important. Illegal immigration is a serious business. We've had four years of unbridled immigration, 15 to 20 million, 15 to 20 million people that have come into this country with zero vetting, zero vetting, and it's a problem. We've had our own Chilean gangs that have terrorized Talega and been to our back here as we have Pangas showing up on the beach. And now that the current administration is actually doing something about immigration, the invasion by land has slowed down to a trickle and now the invasion by sea is happening and the Pangas are coming ashore at San Clemente, Del Mar, Dana Point. You can shake your heads, but that's the truth of the matter. And, and when we talk about a federal issue, it is a federal issue, but this law we're talking about hinders our local law enforcement from cooperating with ICE in a way that would make public safety more effectual. The city, you know, the distraction by saying we, we need to stay in our lane and focus on local issues, public safety is the number one issue in this community and every community in California. So, so we are doing our job. We're doing Herculean efforts on sand and on our fire suppression efforts, but public safety is also a problem. And we've had Pangas showing up in Cypress shores and organized events. These aren't mom and pop kids, they're military-aged men who come up in black and... These aren't mom-and-pop kids, they're military-age men who come up in black and hit the beach and climb into a van and take off. These people are in our country, they're unvetted, and this effort would simply strengthen the president's effort to make this country safer. There was comments made about illegal immigration, like somehow this is about Mexico and Mexicans. We've got 150 nations that have sent unvetted people into this country. This isn't about Mexico or being against brown people. Chinese, Ukrainians, we've got people from just about every planet on the nation coming into our country, totally unvetted, and this country is paying the price. You know, there are a number of Bible verses thrown about, you know, we should have compassion for everyone, but it also says, Romans 13 also says that we're to obey the law and obey the governing authority. And the governing authority currently has a conflict with the state governing authority and the federal government authority. The state is basically saying, we're a sanctuary state. We're going to protect everybody. We're going to allow anyone to come in, and no matter what they've done, no matter what crime they've committed, we're going to protect them, we're going to harbor them, we're going to protect them.
That is not a factor.
Well, look at San Francisco, look at the cities, look at the cities that have sanctuary status, and look at the quality of life in those cities. We don't want San Clemente to be like that. Outstanding, you know, the concept of staying, sir, don't, please don't interrupt. I was polite to listen to all you, so please do the same. This is not a political stunt. We've got millions of people in this country that have not been vetted and have been prob, 250,000 people have died from the drug epidemics brought illegally across our border, protected by the sanctuary state laws we have. Thousands and thousands and thousands of people have been murdered, raped, robbed, and killed. You think that's not, you think that's not, you think that's not true? That's the public safety that we need to protect. That's what allowing our local law enforcement to simply cooperate with the federal effort, instead of being hindered by a state philosophy, a mindset in Sacramento that says, we need to be a sanctuary city, and if our children want to become transvestites and be protected, that's the mindset. That is the mindset.
I'm going to call for the question.
That's the mindset in Sacramento that we're currently, we're currently up against. So this is not, it's politically charged because we have, it's politically charged because we have many people, we have many people that love open borders, that love open borders, and I think a safe country needs borders, or we're not a country.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I move that we table item 10A with no anticipation of returning this item to this council's agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second.
Vote it down.
Let's vote on that one.
Was that a second by Mayor Protonen, Mayor?
Did you hit the?
I hit it.
Mark, did you hit?
Have the guts to vote it down, Mayor.
Vote it down.
The motion, the motion passes 4 to 1. The next item is...
Just to be clear, this is to table the issue. That's what happened. So that means that...
Tabling a motion simply means we're taking no vote on this action, and it's not rescheduled for another hearing. The next item, item...
Basically, it was voted down. That's what that means.
That's a good summary, Mark, thank you. The next item is 10B. Let's take a couple, well, yeah, let's take, it'll take five minutes. That's the mindset in Sacramento that we're currently, we're currently up against. So this is not, it's politically charged because we have, it's politically charged open borders, and I think a safe country needs borders, or we're not a country.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you.
I move that we table item 10A with no anticipation of returning this item to this council's agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second.
Vote it down.
Let's vote on that one.
Was that a second by Mayor Protonen, Mayor?
Did you hit the?
I hit it.
Mark, did you hit?
Have the guts to vote it down, Mayor.
Vote it down.
The motion, the motion passes 4 to 1. The next item is...
Just to be clear, this is to table the issue. That's what happened. So that means that...
Tabling a motion simply means we're taking no vote on this action, and it's not rescheduled for another hearing. The next item, item...
Basically, it was voted down. That's what that means.
That's a good summary, Mark, thank you. The next item is 10B. Let's take a couple, well, yeah, let's take, it'll take five minutes.
I moved that we do an agenda that somebody said he should need to go to DC.
The next slide is, you know, when to dial 911. I get this question a lot. First, if you think there's an emergency, don't, we'd rather you dial this than think, man, I wonder if this is serious enough. We've heard from our sheriff over and over again, when in doubt, dial 911. But certainly when there's a medical, fire, or police emergency, so if you believe that there's a life or lives that are in danger, fire, injuries, medical conditions, a serious crime, you know, those are pretty easy. But one of the things that, when you need an emergency response, and sometimes, like we talked about, these are very dangerous situations. Unfortunately, in my previous employment, we had a Panga with 15 people that overturned, and all 15 of them drowned. All 15 of them drowned in waist-deep water, because the current there is so difficult. So when you see that happening, let's make sure to get them help, at least from a humane standpoint, let's make sure to get people help when they need it, and certainly dial 911. And then, again, you can see at the bottom there, dial 911 if in doubt. And then I just wanted to talk about, there's been some talk about would infrared cameras help? The city of Imperial Beach did have infrared cameras. They can help, they can help low-k people at night. You can see some pictures there. The one on the left is obviously a boat, but what would be helpful in our case, at least at the city level, is when we might have people in the water, on the right-hand side there, people in the water at night, it's easier to locate them after dark in the water. So that's something that the city council might want to consider, just for our own safety here in our community, if that's something the council would like us to look into. There's options for cameras, there's options for even infrared binoculars, but certainly those kinds of technologies could really help our lifeguards. So again, this is a related item to that last topic, but really kind of different. This isn't whether or not to join a lawsuit. This is, you know, what should our residents do? We get that question a lot. What should I do if I see something happening on our beach with one of these? Who do I call, you know, who do I call first? And what, are there any technologies out there that might help either our lifeguards, the sheriffs, or even the federal agents save lives, you know, be able to identify some of these things that are happening in our waters? So you may have a lot more questions, but again, from the discussion that you had in your last meeting, we're kind of limited on what you wanted to see, so I kind of took a stab in the dark, and this is what I came up with. It was a good report, and the reason why I thought it was important to discuss this is because we've seen an increase in the Pongas coming up on the shore. Obviously, there are concerns with videos of Pongas coming up on the beach where women and children are out on their blankets on the beach, watching and videoing as the boats hit, the people hit the beach and scatter, and that's becoming more and more frequent. And most of these, a lot of these Panga landings are happening at night, and it's difficult to see, so I think the infrared component's important. I think it's, you know, sometimes it's difficult to identify a whale or a dolphin if you're too far out, but clearly, as the video there showed, you can see the outline of a Panga and a dozen, dozen or more people crammed into it. What I'd like to see for the protection of our community is the ability to identify these craft earlier. And again, as I said a little bit ago, you know, the land invasion, so to speak...
And again, as I said a little bit ago, you know, the land invasion, so to speak, has been stopped, for the most part. But now, the, like a balloon that just squeezes in one place and it pops out in another, now the water approach is the issue. And more and more people are coming up by Pongas. So I think it's important that they be identified. I'm not suggesting that the city become ICE or take on a federal government's job, but this is a public safety issue where our people can identify these and make a proper call to Customs and Border Patrol and/or ICE and/or the Sheriff's Department, just so that we don't have a dozen people who have been totally unvetted, probably undoubtedly come from nations far and far away, and are a risk to our community. Now, you know, some people would say, we should ignore the problem, they're no risk at all, but I think most of our people know better. So what I'd like to see is simply cameras that the public has access to, that they can watch and look, and if there's a problem, they have the right number to call. Our pier is a perfect location for central San Clemente. I talked to the association folks at Cypress Shores. They're very eager and willing to do whatever they can to cooperate in having cameras down in the south part of town. I've talked to the Shorecliffs Homeowner Association management. They're equally excited about having the city or ICE or CBP place cameras there. And what I'd like to see with rotating thermal imaging, having the citizens be able to look at this, just like they do right now at our beach in the daytime, and have the ability to kind of keep an eye on their own community. The cost, I think, is de minimis. There is an actual cost here, but the technology is over-the-shelf technology. It's not exotic technology, and I think fairly affordable. I don't have any estimates, perhaps staff does, but I just think it'd be a good thing for our community to have and to take an opportunity to kind of keep an eye on their own backyard.
Yeah, I would just add, the cameras that were installed in the city of Imperial Beach were actually installed by the federal government through the Department of Homeland Security. That's something we should explore also. Should the council want to go in that direction, see if there are any programs for the federal government to provide these kind of technologies to us, rather than our citizens having to bear all that cost.
Yeah, I have a question. You suggested that the city council agendized this? I don't recall that.
So in your last meeting, when you agendized this item, there was discussion about the Pongas as well, all in the same conversation. The reason we bifurcated those two is because one was a decision whether or not to join the lawsuit. The other was a discussion about the increase in the number of Pongas that have been coming up on the beach. And it was all intertwined in the same conversation, so that's why we bifurcated it, because I think they were related, but really different items.
Okay, all right.
You said you had these in, sorry. You said you had these in Imperial Beach, and the Customs and Border Patrol utilized them, had access to them. Could you explain a little bit more, what was the city relationship with CB, sorry, Customs and Border Control? Yeah. C, yeah, CBP, sorry, acronyms. Yes, just what, how that worked, what, where their office was, how long would it take for them to get there?
Yeah, of course, the primary regional office of CBP is Imperial Beach. It's on the border, you know, because, so that's why there was kind of a different relationship. They were the ones who actually viewed the screens and whatnot. That was, it was their cameras, it was their responsibility and whatnot. However, they let us use it for lifeguarding purposes. So we were able to use that technology to help our residents, but it was primarily the Customs and Border Patrol that monitored the screens, looked for, you know, it was a little different there. We tend to get a few Pongas a month. They tend to get a few Pongas an hour. You know, it's just a different situation there a little bit. So it's kind of apples and oranges. I wouldn't want to necessarily compare them, because it's such a different situation right on the border than it is here.
But there was, so they funded it, but they did let your lifeguards access it?
Yeah.
Okay. And we haven't reached out yet to see if this is a possibility? You're waiting for council direction on that?
Right. Again, this was agendized by council, so we, and it was from a discussion that you had. Those are great discussions, but we have to kind of interpolate what you want to see, so we try to take the best information we can and bring you a report for you to talk about.
And there were two different, two different really issues. One was strictly litigation mode. This was more of an acquisition asset for the city. But, and again, the city manager and I discussed this, and I suggested that we bifurcate the issues, so that we could kind of consider them separately.
Yeah. Initially, it was the same issue, and it would have been kind of a unique conversation to have both conversations at the same time.
Gentlemen, comments?
Just a quick question. Do you know, what is the response time of our first responders? And then, how soon do you expect a CBP to respond if there's an incident on our coast?
I think it's very situational. I mean, we have very, when we have emergency situations, we have very good response from the Sheriff's Department. CBP, I can't answer that. I would have to, I would have to find out what their response time is, and I think it depends on the time of day, how many officers they have stationed here in San Clemente. I don't know very much about the CBP response time. I just don't know.
I would just suppose that in the last few weeks, it's gotten a whole lot better.
Okay. And if we were to have a thermal image camera on the coast, then how far can we look out? I guess it depends on the height, but in general, how far do you?
On the height, and probably on the quality of the camera, depending on what kind of, you know, pixelation you want, and how much detail you want. But you can, you know, they have different cameras that have different ability to see further, or some that are closer, that with more detail. The ones, and again, I'm doing this from memory, I think we put them in in 2014. So the cameras that were installed in Imperial Beach are probably an older generation. So I would have to do some research on today's cameras. I'm telling you, the technology changes so fast, and you know, it's just, 10 years ago, my TV was like this deep and about this wide. Now it's flat, and so the technology has certainly changed, and I don't know very much about today's.
Okay. Well, I ask the question, the primary reason is, for practical reason, if we detect a Panga approaching to our shore, how much time do we have before they land? And is that enough time for CBP to respond?
Well, yeah, you're probably talking a mile or two. You can certainly see, you can certainly see out into the ocean quite a ways.
Okay. That's a difficult question. I talked to Jeff, I talked to Jeff Gillette, who's the manager of the command station for ICE down in Long Beach, and he coordinates with the San Clemente Station. And he was saying, just give us a call, we'll be there. We have assets in San Clemente, Dana Point. We'll respond quickly. How quickly? I don't know. But it was definitely a different attitude this week than it was a month ago.
What was the cost of that program? And who will man these 24 hours a day? How many people, resources will it take?
Sorry.
Yeah.
So again, you're talking about the Imperial, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, how much did the Imperial cost? What, do you have an estimate of what the cost would be here? And how many people, staff time and personnel, full-time employees, would it take to man these full-time, to be effective?
Sure. So the Department of Homeland Security grant we got, I believe, was $150,000. And that included, though, we had to make sure that the technology was available at the CBP substation, which was not at City Hall. It's closer to the border than where City Hall is. And then we had some software that they gave us, so that our lifeguards could access the cameras as well. And then they had to set up, they had to geocode some of the areas, so that as the cameras scanned, you couldn't scan any private property. So as you came across private property, it would blackout any of the areas that were private property, so you could only, so the cameras can literally only pick up public property. That was just privacy issues. The cameras themselves, we've done some, just initial, just some initial looks. Each camera would be somewhere in the $4,000 to $5,000 range. So, you know, if you were to do three cameras, you'd be in the $15,000 to $20,000 range. In terms of, you know, how many people it would take to man those cameras, we have cameras now, and our lifeguards do use them during lifeguard hours. We don't have anybody that's there overnight. So either we or Border Patrol would have to man them at night. We don't, we don't, we don't have any lifeguards that are 24 hours. What's that? I don't know what, why it keeps ringing.
I think it's your Pat Boone sweater is brushing against it.
Hey, I was going to sing tonight, but it took, the meeting took too long.
And so, correct me if I'm wrong, have most of the Pongas have come at night?
So we, so we, so we would need night personnel to be effective?
It seems to me that, you know, at least in the recent past, most of the unlicensed watercraft that has come ashore has been at night, or early morning hours, but not during the middle of the day, per se. All right.
Andy, would you envision the Border Patrol folks monitoring these things themselves?
I would hope so. I would think that they would have a great interest in doing that.
And just like our citizens currently can look at the daytime videos of the beach and watch our cameras and see what's going on, there could be public access to this, so that the public could see it. Would that be a difficult technological feat to achieve?
No, I think we could achieve that. That would just, that'd be a policy decision of the council, but that would be achievable.
Andy?
Using the same technology, yeah.
Are you aware of any, let's say, software that they can automatically detect those?
Boy, if you guys are going to start talking very much deeper than on/off to me about technology, we better get someone in here that has a lot better answers than me. I don't know. I would assume that's the case, but I don't know. I just don't know.
I think the camera.
This is, this was just prepared, you know, for a discussion point. We didn't, we didn't take a deep dive into any of this.
Yeah, I think from a, from a public policy point of view, I think there's some value in having eyes on our ocean for safety purposes, as well as the illegal immigration safety, as well as marine safety, personal safety. What I'd like to, rather than authorize, fund, I'd like to have you, if you could, because I know you've had conversations with?
Do you want public comments before?
Okay, well, okay, before we have a motion, we'll have public comments. But I'd like to perhaps have you talk to CBP and to bounce the concept off regarding financing, regarding them paying for it, because I think their budget now is amplified in that area, in the enforcement area. So there may be some outside resources. So rather than suggest money, perhaps we could look at simply inquiring, find out more money on, more cost issue, more cost analysis, as well as an interest in the federal government and funding these projects. But I would like to say public access to them. So those are my only comments of staff, and we can hear public comments now unless, gentlemen, you have anything else you want to ask staff? Okay, public comments?
Okay, I'll call the first few speakers. Rosa Mendoza, followed by Louise Herbert, followed by Angela Watts.
You're on.
I'm on now. Okay, good evening once again, Rosa Mendoza, resident for 25 years here in beautiful San Clemente in Toledo. Regarding the intention behind placing the Customs and Border Patrol's contact information on the city's website is concerning. The potential ineffectiveness of this approach is, number one, delayed in response time if somebody calls that number. Providing a contact number for CBP may not result in a timely response to residents' reports, especially during high-volume or urgent situations. Given the fast-moving nature of now the Panga activity, the boats, the time it takes for CBP to respond could render the information obsolete by the time authorities arrive. Number two, this will increase public alarm. Making CBP's contact information publicly available on the website may inadvertently raise concerns or cause unnecessary panic among residents who may misinterpret normal beach activities or maritime traffic. This could overwhelm the authorities with non-emergency phone calls. Regarding the Pongas also, and cameras, fine, secure it for security reasons. I mean, if, you know, ICE is handling it, that is great. But I was a little concerned hearing of Mayor Noel Block's idea about deputizing maybe untrained volunteers to act as immigration enforcement agents. A function that legally falls under federal jurisdiction is responsible, it's irresponsible to allow any kind of groups or volunteers to be viewing cameras, okay? They have no idea of knowing who is legal, who is not. Is it by looks? Are they going to start to profile people? I mean, it could be many, many things. The immigration law is complex, and mistaken identification could lead to serious legal and ethical violations, including false reporting and harassment of innocent individuals. Your plan encourages volunteers to make snap judgments about who looks undocumented, a practice that raises significant concerns about racial profiling and civil rights violations. You will also undermine communities' trust and public safety by encouraging local volunteers to take on immigration enforcement roles, which can be risky and dangerous, eroding trust between immigrant communities and law enforcement. If residents fear being wrongfully reported at ICE, they may become less likely, we've heard this before, to report crimes, seek medical help, or engage with their local government. Do not, please, have our residents, volunteers, work in this fashion. It's irresponsible and risky for them.
Thank you. Louise Herbert, followed by Angela Watts, followed by Tony Rubellino.
Thank you, once again. I think this is a trifecta for me tonight. I agree with the last speaker with what she said. And by the way, Mr. Mayor, you did say having our local residents watch this. You said, as in neighborhood watch. Maybe you can run back tonight's tape, and you'll find your own voice saying that. It is a very scary proposition. I understand the safety issues, completely understand that. But I don't believe that having people have access to watching that and alarm phone calls made because they think somebody looks like this. We've already gone through this with homeless people, people being profiled. I grew up with grandparents who were profiled from Germany. I grew up with grandparents who were turned in because they spoke German in their household. I grew up with Japanese people in Long Beach who were profiled and sent off to Santa Anita Racetrack. This is just an overreach. There's one thing about being safe. There's one thing about taking steps to secure people's well-being, just as you gave the awards today to the people who saved the life of the gentleman here. But there is something about crossing a line that becomes a vigilante. Excuse me, Steve, yes. And we know how you profile. You profile against our teachers. You profile against anybody who's quote-unquote grooming. You do this all the time. You already brought it up this evening again. And you are out of line. And whether or not we do this, citizens cannot be part of the viewing audience on this information. I wanted to ask, you mentioned that down in Imperial Beach, that it was programmed so that the sweep of the camera went black on private property. And we have daytime cameras already in place in San Clemente? Do they show private property presently?
I think we make every effort to make sure they don't show private property.
Can you say that to 100%?
I cannot tonight. I can look, I cannot give you a definitive answer tonight, but I can look into that.
I appreciate that. Because once you start doing that, it goes beyond. As a child of eight years old, we had a barbecue in our backyard, and it consisted of black, Hispanic, Japanese, Korean, a paraplegic, Indian, American Indian. And on Sunday morning, three men from the block knocked on the door and asked for my father to come out to speak to them, and said, you cannot have parties like this.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
That profiling cannot occur in this city.
Next speaker, please.
And nor should you.
Angela Watts, followed by Tony Rubellino.
Hi. As referring to the phone numbers being posted, I'm okay with that, with everyone, you know, having the correct information, going to the right agency to reach out to. I don't think that's an issue for most people. But... I don't think that's an issue for most people, but what I want to talk, talk about is the Panga boats, yes. We don't, this has been an issue here for decades. It's something that we need to work on as a federal government. We had a lot of people come out today, missing time with their families, to be here to talk to you about that. It was clear, San Clemente does not want to spend money on things the federal government should be doing. Mayor Knoblock, you've said it, there's a lot more resources at the federal level to take care of this for. So I do not want to have to come here again. I don't like coming to city council meetings. Please, don't make me sit through this again. Please reach out to the federal agencies, as Andy proposed, and do not bring this back as something that is a city issue. Please, only bring it as a federal issue, and please don't waste our time. Now, when I first read about this proposal on the OC Register, I, you know, had some concerns, and first, like I said, immigration enforcement is responsible of federal agencies, US Border Patrol, Homeland Security. These agencies have the tools, technology, and legal authority to manage issues like Panga boat landings. Our local volunteers, who have generously devoted time to important tasks like fire prevention, are not trained for this kind of surveillance work, is simply not the role. We talked about costs, there's no clarity, and there's no guarantee that this is gonna work, and we also need to consider the unintended consequences. Increased surveillance could lead to unnecessary, unnecessary reports involving fishermen, recreational boaters, or innocent beachgoers. Have you thought about that? This places an unnecessary burden on both local residents and federal immigration authorities who may be inundated, inundated with unverified reports. So instead of spending, setting city funds on surveillance equipment and putting our city employees doing all this work to get your reports done, can we focus on sand, local safety, protecting our schools, helping our community in getting our beach trail done? So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Tony Rubelino, followed by, the next card says, "Decline to leave a name."
Is it Panga or Ponga? I don't know, I'm trying to figure that one out. You know, I've heard some pretty interesting arguments that people are going to be profiled. As far as I know, San Clemente is not a harbor. There should be no boat landings on the, on the shores of San Clemente. This is the premise of this issue. Any boat should be questioned when it lands on the shores of the beach. That's it, straight up. So, actually, we have to dip back into the Wayback Machine. We can go into Mark's deleted tweets that he removed from inspection. Mark, a long time ago, retweeted Nancy Pelosi, and she talked about shutting down America's border. This would threaten American jobs and our broader economy. So you kind of get an idea, maybe, where Mark might be leaning on this topic. Mark also made a Twitter post that he deleted. "It seems like Trump's border policies have created a self-fulfilled prophecy. By claiming that he wants to shut down the border, migrants are rushing to it, creating a humanitarian crisis." Mark also deleted this tweet. "If we looked beyond our borders more and supported others, then there would be less incentive to leave in the first place." Wow. I don't even know where to start with that, Mark. But I would also like to consider, this is a human trafficking issue, really, and this is this general safety issue, human trafficking, not to mention drugs and other illicit activity. Where are the human trafficking organizations that are addressing this? Where's the IFI Freedom Network? Why aren't they here tonight talking about this? I'd like to know. They were very prominent in years past, trying to get their word out. And then I wanted to take a look back in, at their mission statement, just to make sure that, yes, community awareness is a topic. And then I want to look at who's staffed at the IFI Freedom Network, and, well, I'll be. Mark, I think it's your wife listed as the executive director. Well, that's really interesting. I would definitely hope that the people who report being against human trafficking and want to increase awareness would also be here, supporting any and all efforts on the part of our leadership in San Clemente to make sure there are no more boat landings on the shore, and increase surveillance, increase awareness, and make sure that citizens know what the steps are, if we see something, what needs to be done, and who needs to be contacted. Thank you very much.
Could I respond to this? Because my, my spouse was, you know, just briefly, look, a lot of other things, fine. Attack me all you want, attack my policies, attack my ideas, that's fine. To go after my wife, though, and the good work that she's doing, like, that's a new low, and I would hope that going forward, you would take her out of that, and take the policies and the good work that she's doing out of your comments. Thank you.
Yeah.
Next speaker.
Speaker card, the name, they declined to provide a name.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm back. Okay, so I initially saw the article in the OC Register regarding the Ponga boats and, and the surveillance, and regarding that, I, putting the, okay, first, putting the phone number, because that's actually on the agenda, putting the phone number on the website doesn't, I, I'm very neutral about that. The, putting it on a magnet, spending money to, to do that and spread it seems kind of har, it doesn't feel good to do that. I just see it as being completely unnecessary. Regarding the cameras and having the public be responsible for calling it in, as many, as the other people have said, that's, that's, it sounds illegal to me. I don't know the law, but it sounds like deputizing and vigilanteism, and it's, and it sounds like, as other people have said, a lot of calls for the wrong thing, and putting undue burden on our resources, and also not having any kind of fiscal understanding of how much it's gonna cost, what it's gonna take to staff, and what it means long-term. I, there's a lot of work that needs to go into planning it and, and making it make sense to be presented next time, so, thank you.
Amanda.
Any other comments?
Yes, Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Anthony.
Just want to thank Mr. Hall for mentioning the experience at Imperial Beach, and I think that's really important to discuss. You know, the US government does control immigration, but states do have policing powers, and that's shared with local governments, so I wanted to add that. But as Mr. Rubelino said, this is about Panga boats coming to our beaches. I mean, there's plenty of pictures on Facebook and other social media, that there's pictures of Panga boats going on to our shores at Poche, and a concerned resident brought this up last time at the last city council meeting, and this has been a concern for quite some time, and I don't think it's been decades. But I think there's nothing wrong with posting the US Customs and Border Patrol number on the city's website. I mean, that's just public information that's readily available, and that's fantastic. And if people want to put that on their phones, why not? I think that's great. It's, you know, public awareness and, you know, PCA, PSA, and I think it's important that, that the, that the city manager will, you know, will talk to Customs Border Patrol, and hopefully will work with the San Clemente Border Patrol, because it's just within, what, 20 miles, not even that, 15, 20 minutes from our border, San Diego in Orange County border. I do support increasing surveillance, and this is about safety, and I think this is something that people need to be aware of. So this is just awareness, public safety, surveillance, for everybody's safety. Thank you so much.
Mr. Hall, so wondering, in the Imperial Beach case that you're speaking of, were there public people that had the ability to view those cameras?
Actually, you're right at the end of your comment.
Okay, no worries.
We can't have a discussion.
I understand, I understand, you answered a question previously, so I thought we had that ability. And I only wanted to speak on the previous 10A agenda item, 10B. From what I saw on the agenda was just a matter of putting the, the telephone number on the city's website, and I didn't know how I felt about that, hadn't done enough research. I heard some great comments about why it should not go on, and I would lean towards that way. But then, in hearing our city's mayor repeatedly making sure that the public would have access to those cameras, just does not seem right at all, with my feelings and beliefs. Obviously, he feels very strongly about that, and I can understand his reasons, but I wonder what the, his constituents would think about that, and that's what these meetings are for. From my point of view, the fact that you are so adamant, that you repeated it several times, that the public should have access to that, it's, it's really, it's just a really weird thing to say, and I can assure you that, Noah, there's a certain amount of training that goes into these things. We have a lifeguard chief sitting in the back, back here. I was a LA County lifeguard for 20 years. The lifeguards are already using drones and advanced techniques in order to help the job that they're doing in saving lives, but the lifeguard, lifeguard's primary responsibility is on saving lives, not enforcing some of these things. So if you're saying, okay, well, we need these cameras, I thought the issue was about the number, telephone number on a website, but now we're speaking about whether we should put cameras and have citizens have access to these cameras so that they can call the Border Patrol to turn in what they think is somebody coming, and it just seems, I mean, it seems really silly, and it's, it's, it's hard to comprehend that that would be something that you feel so passionately about. The lifeguards, if you have the money that you're talking about, even $20,000, that could help two seasonal recurrent lifeguards protect our citizens on the beach that are swimming on a daily basis, not this fantasy about the 250,000 people that are coming on the shores of San Clemente and all this drama that you're creating. As many people have stated, funds could be used in our city, especially if you're trying to quote-unquote "help" the lifeguards. The lifeguards need help with personnel, not with extra cameras, and the fact that you would like to have citizens viewing these cameras that are untrained, well, just like on a normal day, that is just, I just can't even believe I'm hearing those words come out of your mouth repeatedly. Thank you.
Next speaker. Okay, no more speakers. A couple of comments regarding this, this item. First of all, the, the reference that anyone can call is important to me because, you know, just like we have neighborhood watch, you have many eyes on a, on a potential problem, and then you can respond to it. We have Pongas coming up on our beach. Having people access a public camera shooting, videoing public areas is not illegal, not immoral, not, it's not inappropriate, it's very appropriate. The more eyes you have on the situation, the better. When I first had this, this came up, because last week we started having additional Pongas rolling up into Dana Point, and I thought, how do you watch these things? And, and they come in at night, and it's not, and, and city staff doesn't have people working 24/7 watching our beach cameras, or if we had one aimed at the ocean, they wouldn't be watching that either. But our citizens could watch, just like during the Toledo Chilean robbery or burglary spree, we had citizens driving our, driving the Toledo neighborhoods with their eyes on the situation to see if there's a problem, so they could make a call. These phone numbers are public information, anybody can call at any time. So having people watch a potentially dangerous situation is a public safety matter. It's, it's that simple. So it's about local safety. When the OC article came out, I, I didn't realize that the interest that, that the Border Patrol would have in speaking to Jeff Gillette, at the, the command manager down at the port of Long Beach, I was surprised at how eager they were to, to man these things, to be informed about them, to be involved with them, to be, have access to them. So maybe we don't need locals, but my thinking was, if we had local folks that would just keep an eye on it, because it's their neighborhood, the Pongas are coming into their community, they're landing on their beaches, that that might be a logical, normal thing for people that love our community, that love to get involved, that love to volunteer. We've had hundreds of them in the last couple of weeks spend hundreds and hundreds of hours just because they love our town and want to, want to help. I thought this might be one of those endeavors. It's not illegal, and to, to take this citizen involvement and call it a vigilante, a private, whatever the references were, not illegal, and it's not vigilante. It's people watching their neighborhoods, and if they see something that looks highly suspicious, like a, a boat, like a Ponga with 20 people crammed in it at 1:00 in the morning, come up on thermal image headed toward North Beach, I think perhaps the local police and, and CBP might want to know about that. So, you know, to, to take it to the extreme is, is difficult, and eyes on the public, again, is, is a logical, normal thing. So those are my thoughts, and if y'all have comments before we enter motions, go right ahead, Victor.
Well, I have a motion.
Does anyone have any comments on the issue before we entertain motions?
I make some comments. I think, I think the city needs to look at our overall video surveillance program. I'm not against the idea of having more eyes on the street or intersection or coasting in general, but there need to be a need assessment, mainly from the city, from the marine safety, and from our county sheriff department. I would love to see a, a few more flock, plate reader on important intersections. For example, does the marine safety feel the need to have a infrared function on our camera at the pier? If the answer is yes, then, and if we have the budget, and we can upgrade that camera. But if they don't need it, it's purely for CPB's use, we don't have money for it, and if CPB or IC, ICE, they have the money, and they want to install camera at the city property, we, I'd be open to that. Regarding the monitoring and operation, the access need, in my viewpoint, should only be given to the city, the sheriff department, the marine safety. I, I don't think we should, I, I'm very wary that if we give the access to, to the general public, I think it needs to be done by the professionals. Aside from that, there, there could be some privacy issue, so, that's another.
Well, I'm all for trying to apprehend human traffickers or dope runners. I mean, I, I think that's a good thing. I, I live in a place where I can actually see Poche Beach right there, and I know during lobster season, there's all kinds of boats out there, I mean, that do come in, and fishing boats. It might be problematic just to have John Q. citizen. I, I just think that might be problematic. Boats come in close, and they're gonna be, they're gonna be calling on every boat, and I think immigration, or whoever's Border Patrol responding, that, that might be an issue to them. I, I don't know. I, I do like the idea of more surveillance, and I'm surprised that, that Border Patrol hasn't wanted to put cameras up themselves down here and monitor them, because North Beach in San Clemente is, is the first pla, and actually even down all the way to State Beach in Calafia, because it's the first place you can get cars into readily north of the checkpoint. So they want to get past the checkpoint, they don't want, and, and so they want to come in, so it's, it's very obvious why they come in here, and it seems like they would want to have these cameras here and be monitoring them at their, at the, at the checkpoint up there, I mean, at their office. I, I think that's like a no-brainer. I'm sorry, I didn't mind to use your, your analogy of no-brainer, because I know you're referring to me, but I, but, maybe we could partner or find out a way to, to, to get that, you know, to, to, where they would be monitoring them, they would be the ones responding, and I, I think a Border Patrol agent monitoring it would, would have an idea, is this a fishing boat? Is this really, you know, a Ponga, where it's coming from? And I'd, I'd like to explore that. As far as the phone number, it's a public phone number, ladies and gentlemen. I mean, publishing it that, it's, it's probably, you could Google it anyway, and as far as the magnets go, I think there was misunderstanding. We're, we're not making magnets expressly for this. The city already has a magnet that they put out contact info on, and they were just gonna add it to that. It wasn't expressly for this purpose, so.
I think probably one of the reasons why Homeland Security hasn't done this, because... I think probably one of the reasons why Homeland Security hasn't done this, because for the last four years, we've had an administration that was not interested in doing it. I think, I think things have changed now, so I think, I'm surprised at the conversation I've had, the interest that, so I, I'm optimistic that if we ask our city manager to, to investigate this, he might find a receptive ear at the, at the US Customs and Border Patrol, and, and perhaps offer some solutions that might be of benefit to our citizens.
No, I, I agree. You say things have changed, and they have, and maybe Border Patrol can get more resources now, and that would certainly be one that I would think that they would be interested in, was a monitoring camera system.
Mark, did you have comments?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with the sentiment that San Clemente should not be paying for this. We have enough bills on our hands right now, we have enough CIP projects that we need to do, that, I mean, our, our baseball field, Little League is costing too much right now. We, we need to find better ways to, to utilize that money instead of going after the, the soup de jour of, of our city council. But if the federal government, which this is a federal issue, federal government wants to step in, and they want to provide cameras, and they want to do the monitoring, I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't like the idea, I'm very much against the idea, of having our, our own citizens who aren't trained, who are, you know, 2:00 AM kicking back on the couch, drinking a beer, and seeing something on, you know, seeing something on the monitor saying, oh, no, is that a whale or a Ponga? But I don't know, I'll call it in. Like, we, we, we need to have trained professionals doing this, instead of hoping that our citizens might get the right action in this. There's a reason why we have our lifeguards monitoring our oceans with those cameras and, and not a, a public volunteer. But again, key point here is, is we need to be fiscally conservative on this, and, and the federal government wants to provide the funds for this, by all means, I'm, I'm fine with, with reaching out to them on it. And I'm okay with, with putting the, the contact information on the website, that's, that's fine, too. I will say that, you know, this rhetoric of, well, past administration, this administration, these things, I think they, they, they're not productive in moving the conversation forward. I, I could go tit for tat on this policy or that policy. I would much rather focus on the here and the now of, of where our city is at. I understand we have different political views on it, but I'd rather focus on, on here and what we're doing.
Well, if there's no other comments, we'll entertain a motion, but just let me comment before that, and then I'll get to the city manager. The political environment is where we live.
I, I understand what you're saying.
They can say I'd rather not discuss it, I don't want to be, I don't want to be, let me finish, let me finish my comment, I let you speak. That's the political reality of what we live in, where we live. Those decisions, those, those policymakers that the state and federal govern how we live and what we do. You can't ignore, by not talking about how open borders have been allowed to occur for four years with millions of people flooding and totally invetered, you can't ignore that and say it's like it's always been, because things are different. Things are different. The border is now secure, and they're coming on Pongas.
If you want to go.
And that, that moves the public discourse forward, and it brings public safety to the forefront, and that's what I think this is about.
Look, if, if you want to go down that route, we can, because I could also talk about how there's a bipartisan proposition to create a comprehensive immigration reform that was put up by the last presidency. That was, that was then taken down because of Trump. We could go down that route. I don't want to. I don't want to do this, I want to focus on our council.
Call for the question, please. Call for the question.
There's no question on the table, but we'll entertain a motion after we make one.
Yes, yeah, I, I have a motion to approve the staff recommendation that we place the contact information on the Customs and Border Patrol, on the city's website for residents to contact if they discover a Ponga on the beach of San Clemente or approaching the beach.
I second. That second? Would you consider a friendly amendment to ask the city, city manager, oh, city manager, before we get to that motion, you had, you had, you raised your hand, did you have something you wanted to say?
I only made a commitment to answer the gentleman's question. Imperial Beach, in order to view any of the screens, was a public records request. San Clemente is a little bit more transparent than that. We do broadcast 24 hours a day still shots of our cameras. So it's, it's a little bit different in each community, it's a policy decision that council makes. The other thing that I just, I just want to add, just, and then maybe I'm out of school here a little bit, but my experience with CBP is they're all about keeping people safe. And the Pongas are very dangerous. And so a big part of what they try to do is keep people safe that are coming in, they're, they're dangerous for all parties. And so, don't want to paint them in it with a broad brush that they are just going up and gathering people and throwing them in the clink. They're, they're very compassionate, they work very hard to keep people safe. They're, those officers risk their lives to keep people safe.
Thank you. Victor, would you consider a friendly amendment to ask the city manager to inquire of, of Homeland Security to see if they, if they have an interest in placing cameras on our, on our various locations?
I'd rather just deal with this one, and if you have a separate motion, that you can make it.
Okay.
I'd call the question.
Okay, so this is just the, the staff recommendation?
Just the staff recommendation.
All right.
I would make a substitute motion that we accept the staff recommendation, instruct the city manager to communicate with the Border Patrol, Customs and Border Patrol, to see if they're interested in placing ocean pointing cameras in, on our pier, and at the locations where our two North and South Homeowners Associations have eagerly embraced the concept, at Cypress Shores and at Shore, Shore Cliffs. And that'd be my substitute motion. Have it investigated, and then simply report back.
I would second that.
What, just a question, and the cameras that they're putting up would be monitored by their, their personnel?
I presume so, yes. They're putting it up, I'm sure they would.
Well, I, well, I, I mean, that's the idea.
Whether, whether we have access to it, we might have a difference of opinion. I think citizens should have access to it, but, but maybe, maybe they won't want public access, but we'll know that when we inquire of what they're, what they're able to do and what they're willing to do.
It's merely an inquiry, right?
So, does that answer your question on the motion? I, I don't know the answer to that, so.
City manager, so, what's your, your impression, is you're gonna contact Border Patrol, whatever, and see what the feasibility of them putting in cameras, is that, is that what?
That's correct, and if you'd like me to go a step further to ask them how they would be monitored, I'm glad to ask them that question. If it's their cameras, then my guess is they would monitor them.
I mean, if it's just an inquiry, okay.
I'm a question, yeah. Okay, we have a substitute motion, is there a third motion, or shall we call for the question?
I, I just really want to be clear here, we are, what this motion is, we are just, we are doing the staff recommendation and then inquiring.
Instructing the city manager to communicate with Homeland Security and their various departments on whether they're willing to place and, willing to and pay for cameras on our pier and on the community association buildings on the north and south end of our town.
Okay.
And simply report back to us on his findings. Okay, on the substitute motion.
My, my screen is locked up, so you'll have to vote for me. How's the vote, aye? Aye. Yeah, aye.
Substitute motion passes 5-0. Next meeting, next item, excuse me, is our consent calendar. Do we have any, any council members want to pull any items before we see if the public does? If not, does the, are there any public comments?
Public comments.
Okay. Anyone want to make, care to make a motion or bring up an item for discussion?
I'll move that we move the calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Lefler, second by Mayor Protem. Let's vote.
Go aye for me, Laura.
Yeah, he's in it.
I'm, I'm locked in, locked out. You guys can vote.
Carrie's 5-0.
Okay, that carries 5-0. Next item is Oral Communications Part Two.
Okay, and we do have two speaker cards, three speaker cards. Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Mike Kay, followed by Tony Rubellino.
So, I have a slide. It's just really quick, hopefully. Can you restart my timer? Is that even up? Okay, great, thanks. Next slide, please. So, I emailed Ryan Chamberlain, I got a response, he's the TCA CEO, regarding the clearing of brushes, or brush at the TCA parcel, and he said that it was the TCA property. And so, you know, earlier this week, TCA was contacted by the city of San Clemente requesting expedited access to the Pico parcel for the city lead brush clearing activity. The city initiated the, the request at one-time effort with the TCA. The TCA granted the access as the city effort was deemed to be mutual benefit. So, next slide, please. And it, it came to our, my attention that the property was owned by the TCA, and just kind of wondering, that I know that this parcel, that the city of San Clemente wants to purchase this parcel, or is in the process of acquiring ownership of it. So, I, I was just wondering, did the, did our city clear this parcel, or, because I saw a post from Mayor Protem Almira saying it was on city property, so I kind of wanted some clarification of that, because the TCA has millions of dollars, and they've collected tolls for years, and they have plenty of money to, to do, to brush clearing on their own funds, and they also have a cattle program that they come in, I know that's limited. So I just wanted to know if this is on TCA property or not. Also, I have to speak to change the subject, I do support the First Amendment, but there seems to be some retaliation against a San Clemente resident for exercising his free speech. And, you know, this is a protected freedom, but however, there's also, the First Amendment includes the right to petition government, and this is where you, a person can ask its government to correct, fix, or change a policy. And this is something that I know, I have done it, and some other, another resident has done it. We've done PRAs and to show that former mayor, Chris Duncan, did use his hyperlink to his city, to his state assembly run when he was answering emails. He also used his mayor badge to other places, picket lines and whatnot. But I think what I'm trying to say is that there's, there's a sense of retaliation that I've seen on social media, in articles and whatnot, and, you know, I think people should be able to come here without any kind of fear of being retaliated against, and, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mike Kay, followed by Tony Rubellino, followed by Angela Watts.
I'm, I want to follow up with Amanda was just saying. I have to say, sitting back there, it is getting uncomfortable. Our fine mayor might want to find that gavel that mayors in the past have used, and a call for order, I think is in order back there. It's getting a little unruly, it's a little bit much, and it doesn't need to be that way. We do have political change going on right now, and I have a sensation sitting there that there's a resistance building, and it's not a good feeling. And I'd like that nipped in the bud, and I'd like us to go back to a very strict interpretation of the protocol, correct protocols, to go on in what is a very important sanctuary of procedure, but also free speech. It is a place where citizens should step up, right where I am right here, right now, and feel comfortable expressing their beliefs, and then being able to walk back and sit down, without anyone going, like, gonna cut your head off, which did happen tonight, without boos, without murmurs and sitting behind you. That's intimidation, and it's wrong. I sit at these meetings regularly, I listen to political ideas of the full spectrum, and I don't ever make those kinds of comments, I never have. I've never put down anybody, I've never disrespected anybody, I treat this somewhat, treat a holy space. It's a, it's a, it's a right and a privilege, it's not a privilege, it's a right, and we need to uphold it, and it's getting a little out of, out of hand. The back and forth is not part of our protocol as well, so please, let's, let's tighten it up. Okay, needed to say that. Now I'm gonna switch gears real quick, and put in my happy voice. I've been getting a lot of requests from HOAs about goat grazing, mechanized weed abatement, and it's almost a, a sense of desperation. I've gone out and had coffees now with probably 10, 12 different people from at least four different HOAs, and I'm not really in a position to answer their questions, so I think our, our town needs to have a, a get-together, an open forum where we have some type of a, of an understanding and a communication that can go on for stakeholders, and not only HOAs, but TCA, as, as brought up. There are large absentee landowners here who are adjacent to HOA properties, and HOAs are concerned that they're not controlling their weeds, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're doing a good job with these volunteer weekends, I hope we continue with that. The community definitely, from what I can gauge out there, is, is concerned about fire. I don't think that's gonna go away. I think it's gonna get dry in June, I think we'll have more fires. Fires tend to be two or three years in a row, I think we're gonna hit that, and this is LA with their, their loss, and they dominate the media, so I think this is an issue. So if we could up our game a little bit and get a public forum to disseminate information, I think that'd be really helpful.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Tony Rubellino, followed by Angela Watts.
Talk about being over the target, I think that's the applicable term here. Anybody who's been paying attention has noticed that there have been a few letters to the editor in the San Clemente Times. We've got speakers coming up and addressing the oral communications this round, and this topic has been addressed over and over and over. Actually, Mark, I think, I believe spearheaded the effort to silence Second Amendment, or sorry, First Amendment free speech during the second oral comm, and that got defeated. I don't know why there's so much opposition right now, maybe it's because Chris Duncan got defeated three times. Maybe it's because Watts, who had the, the Democratic machine running full steam behind her, got defeated. Now she's here tonight, and I think I heard her say, paraphrasing, that she'd rather not be here, and that she doesn't like coming to these meetings. Talk about dodging a bullet. Holy cow. Now, I, there's gotta be a reason that there's so much pushback and opposition. I believe it was a, a general impression of those on the left that when there's a presidential election, that the real true testament to who is the winner is the popular vote, and that there was a big pushback against the Electoral College, which constitutionally is the only one that matters. And if you dig back into Mark's deleted tweets, we'll look back, and Mark wrote, "The 2020 election is almost a year away. Is anyone talking about changing the Electoral College? Last time, the winner lost the popular vote by 3 million, now look where we are." He then went on and said, "Abolish the Electoral College and go to the popular vote." Well, we can't do that, that is against the Constitution, but in the most recent presidential election, not only was the Electoral College solidified, but it was also the popular vote in all swing states. That is called a mandate. So now this is what you have, and this is what we're going to be dealing with for the next four-plus years. Get used to it. Buckle up. I don't care what you have to say, I don't care if you're going to call my employer and complain, I don't care if you're going to write a letter to the editor, I'm here and I'm ready to take it. So, if that's the case, bring it on. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
I'm here right now just to get the last word, so Tony Rubellino, or whatever your last name is, doesn't get it for once, because he's here every city council meeting, wasting your time, and talking about me, who ran for city council, and this isn't the first time he's talked about me. He's talked about me many a times up here because I ran for city council. Now, you guys talked about, Michael Kay talked about people getting attacked, and should be able to come up here and speak. He comes up here and speaks about me, a citizen, someone who did not think I'd ever running for city council. This is why people don't want to do it and step up, because we have people like him that comes up and talks about me, not just here, but online, and then about you guys, about our city council members. Now, I'm not asking you to stop oral communications, number two, right? We have free speech, great. But I'm asking you to actually keep him in line and use your gavel, mayor, when he's talking about people, talking about these things that you should be stopping. This is not okay, and we need to keep people in check in here. That is absolutely correct. We need to have law and order and let people have free speech. We need to have law and order and let people have free speech, but he's putting on a show. Can we stop the politics? Can we stop, what's our saying, one town, one team? That is what we should do. And now, please, let's stop wasting our city time and your time. And yes, I hate coming to city council meetings. I usually watch them online, because I have kids, I have a family. I absolutely wanted to be up here, making decisions and doing what you guys are doing. And I'm proud that I ran. I wish I could be up there, and I would have been happy to be here for every city council meeting. And Tony, when you have something to say to me, please say it to my face.
Any more public comments? Okay, the next item is any future agenda items. I think, Victor, you have one?
I have one, yes.
Go ahead.
At our last investment advisory committee, we discussed at some length the 115 trust provisions. I'd like to agendize the 115 trust movement for, for the city, have, invite the city treasurer to come and make a presentation on that. I can't, obviously, because it's not agendized, talk about everything we've talked about at, at the, our last meeting. I think it's the right direction for this city. I'd like us to consider it, hear him out, and see if that, the direction that we go.
It's definitely a viable option. We've been talking about for a long time. I'll second that for agendizing. Do we need a third, Victor, do you think, for a staff report?
I think it would be helpful to get the report, yeah.
We have three, three votes for a staff report on the 115 trust. Thank you. Mark, did you have an item?
Yeah, we brought up before about creating some sort of firewise community. There's different programs out there, and if some of these programs are initiated in the city, apparently we can get some, some insurance discounts on some of our housing insurances. So I'm wondering if I can get a second and a third to direct staff to come back with some options of what, what that process would look like, general discussion, if you come back with something, we can, we can go further on.
Are you looking for a community forum?
No, no, just if the staff can bring back general options of, of becoming a firewise community.
I'll give you a second. I actually know somebody Andy can talk to who started a firewise group up in, up near Yosemite, who's really an expert at it, so I'll give you a second.
Great, thank you. Do we need a third?
Probably.
Can I get a-
Yeah, I'll get a third for a staff report.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Rick, go ahead.
Yeah, I've, I've got one. Alluded to it earlier. I'd like to tighten up our ordinances for all groups that use our beach. I think, I think a lot of the staff work has already been done on it, actually. Is that right, Andy? Do we have kind of a?
Can we come and out, right?
Okay, so do you need, do I need a third so you can brush it up and tighten it down? But I don't think it's going to take much staff time.
Who's the second?
I'll second it.
Oh, all right, I'll third, yeah.
Thank you.
Zen, did you have anything you want to add, agendize? Okay, with that, reports, commissions and committees, any reports?
I already gave my report.
Any other reports? Okay, city council subcommittees, any updates? City attorney?
Thank you. I just want to report, it's a pleasure to serve the City of San-
All right, thank you. Glad to have you here.
Is it, is it really?
Mr. City manager, do you have any reports? No, no reports? Oh, my goodness. Okay, well then, let's, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, but I'd like to ask, I'd like to-
Mayor, I have a question. I'd like to, the city manager, if you have anything to report.
He just indicated he didn't, did you?
No.
What were you expecting?
I said, no, I have a question for the city manager, and I want to know if he has anything to report on that topic. That is, we have two successful brush clearing operations, and do you have any update on the area that's in the Sematell campground?
So, I'm sorry, oh, my mic's on. So, the area he's talking about is on the south part of the community. As you know, that's also a fire danger area, and we are working with, that's leased by state lands, or, I'm sorry, state parks. So we are working with them to see if we can get a, someone help me clear it, fire break, a fire break.
Expand, expand the fire-
Expand the fire break to come all the way down to the freeway so we can protect the south end of the community. It's late when you can't think of the word "fire break," but, yeah, so as you know, up by Steed Park, there's a large fire break that goes along the side of the city, but it doesn't come all the way down the southern edge of our city. So we want to work with them and see if there's a possibility of doing that. We, I will continue to try and get an answer from state parks, and they will probably have to get permission from the Marines, since the Marines actually own the property. But we will continue to work on that. I do not have permission, I do not have an answer on that yet.
Mr. City manager, follow-up question. Do you, regarding our fire break, we've had two weekends in a row, short notice was, a comment was made by Mark earlier. Do you have, envisioned this, any additional time, times to allow our citizens to participate in our fire reduction effort?
What I think I heard is that we need to plan one, but it needs to be further out in the future to give people an opportunity to maybe plan for that. So, I'll get with staff, and we'll try to put together something maybe in a month or six weeks so people can plan on it, and, and by that time, I think we'll start to see some of the weeds come back, whether that's the thistles and mustard weed, so that'll give us an idea of when we can get out and knock some of those weeds down early before they get to the condition they are in, in other locations.
Yeah, and I agree with Zen's comment on the fire break. That area in town is, is one that even the fire department identified as a high-risk area. So if we get the Camp Pendleton, and Victor, you're our liaison with the general out there, if we can get them to, because they're the underlying fee owner, get them and parks to agree to allow us to clean that thing right back up to the city boundary, I think that'd be a real plus, a real good target location for the next cycle, whenever you and your staff are able to put one together. Appreciate what you've done.
Okay.
One more question. We call it volunteer effort, but is there costs associated with each of these?
Yeah, there, there are some city costs associated with that. We, we do have a contract with a gentleman that goes out and does weed clearing for us, so they clear the weeds in advance, and so there has been probably, I'm guessing, about $25,000 in the two, two events so far, to clear the weeds in advance, and then the volunteers go and clean up the debris, if you will, and stack it up, and then we have our, either our crews or our, our contract go pick it up and put it in dump trucks and haul it off. So, yeah, it's not, the volunteers have done an incredible job, but it's not, there are some costs associated, yes.
Okay, if we could have a motion to adjourn, I'd like to ask whoever makes that motion to make it in honor of a former San Clemente firefighter, Ron Stevens, a retired OCFA firefighter who just recently passed away. So if we could adjourn the meeting in his memory?
I'll make the motion to adjourn in, what was his name?
Ron Stevens.
Ron Stevens' memory.
Second. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Your motion included a, that we'll be meeting again on February the 13th at 2, at 2:00 PM at the fireside room at the community center, 101, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's what I thought. Okay, we'll see you then. Thank you, one and all.